...their meeting tonight, October 16th, 2014. Please join me in our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a full board this evening, which is nice. That's great. First public hearing is the Benoki Theater subdivision site plan, preliminary subdivision site plan hearing for a two-lot subdivision and site plan, one lot to contain an existing two-family residence and garage, and a second lot to contain a new two-story family residence, three Springside Avenue zoning ATC Arlington Town Center, negative declaration adopted 717-2014. Benoki, am I saying it?
Benoni.
Benoni, sorry. Benoni Theater owner. Benoni. Benoni. I get it. Sorry. Benoni.
Good evening. My name is Christian Pajee from Lawrence J. Pajee Engineering, P E P C. On behalf of the applicant, do I need to be sworn in? All right, finger. Okay.
It's not the zoning board.
Okay, just making sure. It's been a while. To bring everybody up to speed, we were before the zoning board in August where we received our variances that were required, the area variances and the setback. We have since gotten more topo information and revised the plans per some of the consultant comments and responded to them and resubmitted, bringing us to here. I know that there were several comments regarding driveway orientation, which the planning department had issued. They also issued a sketch for an alternative design, which we would be happy to discuss whenever is appropriate. And I know there is a few technical comments from the engineer that we will obviously address and some comments and concerns from the zoning administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. As he noted, they've been through the zoning board for the variances they need. The staff had worked up on just an alternate concept to reflect the board's initial interest back in June or July about having the house on the corner because at that time the driveway in the corner wouldn't have been allowed directly on the corner and would have interfered with turns. They've now put the house on the roadway and parking on the inside. Staff had all, to reflect the board's previous interest in having access off the dead end, instead, staff had provided conceptual sketch to that end. For, we don't have a particularly strong recommendation one way or the other. We'd like to see the access off the dead end. If there's reasons mitigating against it, we're okay with that. Oh, and also just for the app, there's a note, if there becomes a problem dimensionally with the layout, the applicant has proposed spaces that are 10 by 20, which is reasonable for residential. The town minimum requirement is 9 by 18. If the width of the lot becomes a constraint, the applicant might be able to say, which in this instance may make a difference. Lastly, I talked with the building inspector just this afternoon, and the comments in your packet from him dated, oh, I think, dated-
September 25th.
September 25th are withdrawn. Apparently, that code requirement related to the lot line would not apply as it relates to the right of way, although it might apply where the house to be on the opposite side. And then you have other comments in your packets recommending that the board act to approve the application with the conditions attached.
Great. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Do I hear a motion? Open the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Moved in second. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Charles Mills?
No.
Which one did you want to comment on? Center point? That's not a public hearing.
Same number.
It's okay. I just want to make sure we get everybody who wants to-
Comment.
Yeah. You'll have a, I'll let you know when you can comment. How's that? Okay. Thank you.
I move we close, just a second here. I move we close the minor subdivision and site plan public hearings.
Second.
Moved in second and call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Go around the board for any comments. We start with Joe.
I have no comment.
Okay. Ed?
The only thing would be the-
Pull the mic down, please, guys. Oops. Thank you.
The only thing would be the clear understanding of this building code. Is it or isn't it, you know, one way or the other?
Those comments were withdrawn by the building department.
Well, then I thought I heard maybe.
No, they were withdrawn.
They were withdrawn.
They are withdrawn.
The building inspector withdrew the comments.
But that's, I thought you had a pretty good idea there as well.
Thank you. Marvin?
Might be taken under consideration in terms of that Vanderwater exit. I think, did you draw that up, Eric?
I'm sorry?
Van Wagoner Road?
Yeah, the alternate.
The alternate coming out on Vanderwater Avenue.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah. Well, it might be something to consider. That's all I have.
Okay.
No comments, no further comments. We'll say that. We agree with most of them.
Rich?
I don't have anything to add.
Carl?
Yeah, it's looking good. I mean, I know they fit in this sort of tight space and everything, so it's, but you got your, all your variances in place now from the zoning board, so it looks like you're good to go ahead. I think the driveway is okay where it is on the left side of the house there. My view, you know, I know the hill rises up in the back, so. The only thing I had mentioned, I think there was a comment in here by, by your landscaping proposed between the two driveways, forsythia or whatever, something that doesn't grow wild, I'd even consider just, just grass there or something because you need someplace to put the snow when you, when the driveways are cleared.
Yeah, we were-
Unless you had another plan for that.
Yeah, we can work with, when we take any suggestions tonight, that was a comment from the zoning administrator to, you know, forsythia may not be the best option. And we're fine with choosing another hedge, a different type of screen, but we, we did receive some comments from the board requesting that we provide some sort of screening between the two lots.
Okay.
So either way, we would be fine with us, so, but we, we're open to any suggestion tonight. Otherwise, we'll, I can work directly with the zoning administrator, see what's appropriate.
I just know I have a small space between me and my neighbor and we want, the snow all winds up piled there.
It is a small space, so.
All right. And I know you've made nice improvements to the existing house there. I think it's good.
Carl? Peter?
I think if, if you have the opportunity, you might want to take advantage of that 9 by 18 parking space because you really don't have any room. There's no breathing room on the west, on the east side of that building. And it, forsythia really grow.
Yeah.
They really grow.
I agree with you. I would consider something other than forsythia.
Absolutely.
And the 9 by 18 makes a lot of sense in this case.
Okay.
Okay. And I think we're talking about plan that Eric drew with that option?
Are we ready to discuss that? We're good? Because I, I have some additional information to, to comment on that, so.
Okay. I would have rather heard that before I went around the board, but all right.
I'm sorry. Where should I start? Hope I have enough copies. So what I have-
I'll have that for you, please.
That'd be great. Thank you. What Carol is passing out is some photographs of the site showing the existing vegetation on what is the east side of the property along Vanderwater. And also, it's a sketch from, that I actually drew up in CAD with the actual dimensions of the parking stalls with a, so not a 10 by 20, so I can reduce those to 9 by 18. That's understood. But with also a 26-foot backup lane to, for entrance and exiting the property. So that shows the dimensions of what that type of layout would require. The applicant is happy to consider this type of layout. Both are feasible. We would prefer to use the, the layout that we had presented. We feel that the, the turn into the lot with the building, parking up parallel to the building would be kind of difficult to maneuver as opposed to pulling straight in and straight back. But again, both are possibilities. And also, the, the straight driveway would provide a better situation if the applicant chose to build a garage in the rear of the lot in the, in the future at some point. Right now, that's obviously not financially possible, but if it, if it does present itself, the lot, the layout that we presented is a lot more, is a lot better layout for that type of situation. Also, the photographs, we're, we're trying to keep the vegetation along that easterly property line to really provide a buffer along Vanderwater. And putting that driveway along Vanderwater would take a lot of those trees down and existing vegetation down. We could replace that, but the intent was to try to keep what is existing. It provides a pretty good screen. It's pretty thick. So our stance is, or our preferred layout is what we have presented, but we are, again, open to discussion and any suggestions of the board and happy to work with you, so.
What is the, on this revised layout, what is the offset distance from your proposed, the location of the house on, I guess it would be the west side of the house to the, to the western property line? What's the-
It's probably two feet. We were trying to keep two-foot setbacks from the property line.
It actually looks like it might be a little more. Yeah. Got a scale?
Excuse me, is it, are we saying that the setback on, on the east side in the property line is two feet?
On this, on this revised sketch, on the, on the western side, I believe, yes.
From, yeah, the offset from the, the west, the proposed new boundary, the west side of the proposed new boundary line that's putting the map-
That's to the left, right?
To, to this, to the proposed two-story, two-family. It might be four feet.
Between the green line and the red line, on the left, your, your new, your new-
It says two feet.
I think it's two feet.
Yeah. It says two feet.
I see the property line. What's the, what's the-
Between the garage and the-
That's the property line.
What's under the forsythia?
It still looks like more than.
Christian, it looks to me like if you have three cars in this, the only way to get out of here is to back out.
Yeah. They're, they're blocked in. And that's, that's the existing condition on the, the other side. I know it's not the, the best situation, but they're able to make do. And that, that one turn is really where our concern was with the alternative layout proposed by the planning board. So making that one maneuver off of Vanderwater into those parking stalls and then once again backing out. Unless you made the, the entrance a little wider along Vanderwater, right now it's shown as a 12-foot entrance. I would think that if you were to have that type of layout, you might want it to be the full width of the, the backup lane, a full 26-foot.
So you can get out and, and into those stalls.
Or you just have to-
Okay.
Cover more impervious.
Exactly. And you'd have a 26-foot.
So we got, we got two options here the way I look at it. We can leave it and make a recommendation, or we can let them work out with staff which way is the best way to go considering the parking. Or we can defer and have a meeting with the applicant, staff can have a meeting with the applicant and see which ways we all agree on without doing the homework here in front of the board.
And I really don't have any disagreeing with the leather layout myself, so I would just, you know, if, if we want to do that, letting staff work it out with them is fine with me.
Neil, did they end up needing a variance if they go with this alternative then? Right? I mean, they, for the two-foot or no?
No, no. I, my, my question about the offset in the side yard was really going, kind of going back to the building inspector's, you know, commentary about the window, this, this requirement in the building code that says that you can't have openings on a wall-
Oh, right. Okay.
With a property line. Can't have windows, can't have doors, that, that kind of thing. And I don't know what's proposed otherwise on that side.
But there would be no variance with only-
No, no. It's in, in the ATC, the side yards are by zero.
Okay.
Well, what's the flavor of the board? You want to leave it to staff to figure out which is the best way?
Yeah, I, actually, I think we're talking about three different possibilities.
Yeah, I know. It's all got to do with the three parking spots. I have no, I have no problem. Neil, what's had a problem with it?
No, I'm good.
All right. Okay.
If we do, I don't want to jump the gun, but if we do use the alternative suggested by the planning board, is there any preference as to what type of screening or buffer would be along-
Well, we're going to let you work that out with staff.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. I think all the basic components are here. It's just a matter of seeing which way works the best.
Okay.
And there's no variances required else, so I think we're okay that way.
Yep. If, if, just as a, if it turns out to be in the eyes of staff, no significant objective difference from, between the proposed and the alternative, except for the backup conditions onto Springside and blocking in with the proposed versus the backing up onto Van, onto the Van Wagner dead end on the alternative, does the board have a preference between the two? No? Okay.
I don't. I don't.
Either, either way, it's, it's going to be problematic.
I don't think Springside's a high traffic.
Correct. Which is why I ask, if both ways are, end up the same, do you have a preference one way or the other? Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I move that the planning board grant conditional minor site plan subdivision approval, no site plan approval for the Theodore subdivision and site plan subject to the following, one through 10, and with the staff working out the, the, which option is the best with the applicant.
Just one comment, if I may-
Yes.
Before we vote. In the option it's up, for grabs, I guess, you're showing it's set back a lot farther than what Eric was showing. In other words, this versus what Eric showed, I think you're trying to give a lot more backup space, right?
Yeah.
Eric kind of ends right here.
Oh, yeah. That's, yeah, we're trying to provide-
So what you tried to do is provide a lot more backup. So I'd say I'd go for his more so than yours. So if that becomes an alternative-
Yeah.
Yeah, mine was conceptual. He's, he's done actually a better job at, at engineering it.
Okay. I just didn't know.
Considering he's an engineer, I guess that makes sense.
An option A and B, that's it.
Works.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's, car number one get out.
Okay. Do we have a motion on authority? Do we have a second?
Second.
We moved in seconded. Planning board grant conditional minor subdivision approval and conditional site plan approval for the Theodore subdivision and site plan subject to the following, 1 through 10, and I stated 11 staff to work out the best option per the discussion this evening. And call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And now we want to do architectural review. Are you prepared for that?
Uh, we were, I do not have the floor plans with me, no.
We don't need the floor.
No, the exterior.
We just need the-
Elevations.
Did, did we not submit?
Yeah, they're, they're in there.
Well, you need to go over the materials, colors, whatever.
Oh, okay. We were not prepared to do that.
We'll be following the same thing, exactly the same way what we have done to that left side of the house.
Is that okay?
Would it be the, would it be the yellow?
It'll match the house, it'll match the house next door?
Exactly. Yeah. Same, same.
Same material, same colors?
Yeah.
Well, how will they, how will they know the difference?
What's that?
How will they know the difference?
I just have to put the number outside.
Okay. They better come home sober.
They better read the number.
I'm okay with it. I'm fine with it.
If the board wants to base their review on that and the submitted elevation, you could leave the materials and final sub, bad review if you want to.
Yeah.
I just had a question. Is that vinyl siding or hardy plank or?
Vinyl siding.
Vinyl and a, and a trim.
White trim, vinyl siding, yellow, and maybe brown roof.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly what you have on the left.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Yeah.
Good motion.
Uh, move we accept architectural approval as proposed.
And as described, it'll match the house next door if it's-
Correct.
So on.
Second.
You'll provide samples and stuff to, to the department at some point. We need some samples.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Call the question. Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Application number two, Fairview Commons, site plan hearing for the construction of 170-unit apartment complex and an 8,500 square feet of support space, 66 Fulton Avenue zone FC Fairview Center and PROD planned residential overlay district, 13.95 acres. Seeker negative declaration adopted 8/21/14. Page Park Associates owner.
Maybe I want to leave your name. Good evening. I'm wondering if the man behind the curtain is gonna, is he here? Sorry, I'm just waiting for the screen to go down. There we go.
Do you have a recommendation?
No. I think so. Over there.
What we did was we referenced, this is rather than just peating, so we got a little ziz.
Okay. Here it is. I got it.
Should be the first letter? Yeah, that's it. I hear a different. Right?
Okay. I'm Kelly Leibl with Page Park Associates, and we're here to discuss the Fairview Commons project. What I'd like to do, sometimes it helps me explain where we've been so everyone understands where we are today. And so this project, I guess as a human resources person would call it as a hopper because it's been back and forth just statutorily to a number of different boards. So we're getting near the end, and I just wanted to try to give you a sense of where we've been and then where we are tonight. So just briefly, this project started, the first chapter of the book was with the town board. We applied for a zoning amendment, which is why it started with the town board, site plan approval and land contour. After that, the town board reviewed the application, the sighting of the building and so forth, and as required, they sent it to you, the planning board, for the seeker review of the project. We concluded, or we started the seeker review in February and had a public hearing, so that was a fairly lengthy process. On August 21st, if you recall, the planning board issued a seeker determination and provided the town board with a positive recommendation on the prod, which again is the planned residential overlay district, and issued the land contour change permit. After that, we went back to the town board, as we're required to do, to seek the approval of the prod, which is the zoning amendment. It's really a rezone. It's a zoning amendment for the PROD. So we did receive that approval on October 1st, and that's what gets us back here tonight to you to do the, complete the review of the site plan approval of the project. So I'll go through the drawings and the plans and where we are with respect to the access and the off-site traffic improvements. Phil Greeley is here tonight, Richard Cantor, Mike McCormick, Ken Kessaminto. And we also brought again the two members of the management group, United Management, if you remember, I think they came to this board before. So they did come down tonight to answer any questions that you have regarding their project or, or portion as well. So this is the project, as everyone knows. It's the same project that you saw a few months ago, except for the modification to the entrance, which we had discussed with you at the last meeting. So it's 151 units, broken down in three different buildings, and the access is currently proposed on Fulton Street, as you can see on the right side of the drawing, with emergency access onto Cedar on the opposite end of the, of the project, and I'll go through those. Building A, these are all four-story buildings, so Building A is 15 units and the commercial space that we had spoken about, which would be the management office, a fitness facility, and a small media room for tenants of the space. So all of the commercial space in that building is solely for the tenants of this property. Building B is 78 units, and Building C is 58 units. And again, this is the same building configuration that you saw at the last meeting. It's 451 parking spaces, and I'll go through those parking spaces. So the prod, the PROD requires 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit, which would be 227 spaces. Plus, we have the commercial component that I spoke about, and I broadly call that commercial, but again, it's exclusively for the tenants of the facility, and that would be 34 spaces. So the total that we would be required under the prod was 261. We did discuss with this board at length some modifications to the parking, which is under the planning board's purview, and it was asked that we provide 75% of the bedrooms with the parking spaces plus the commercial. So if you take 75% of the bedrooms, that equals 386 parking spaces, plus the 34 for the commercial, for a total of 420. We are providing 451 spaces, so we do have extra spaces. What we're seeking to do, we want to talk to you about this because we think it's important, is to landbank some of those parking spaces. So by landbank, I mean we would grade the area for these parking spaces. They would be finished grade, they would be seeded, and we would have an agreement with the board that if at such time that the board deems appropriate, something that we would put in the agreement, we would build the spaces. But we believe that we don't need them. We believe that we have extra spaces. If it comes to be determined that we need them, we would pave them. So we wanted to talk to the board about that tonight. So this is the area that we're proposing, where I just put the arrow and then I just covered it up so you can see what we're talking about. And that would be 46 spaces that we would propose to landbank. The code, these bulk tables are on the plans that you have, but I just referenced them so that you're aware that we didn't seek any variances for this application. It meets all of the bulk requirements for the zoning and the PROD. As I'm sure you know, that this is a new building product, so it meets all of the new building codes and fire codes, you know, state-of-the-art building with all of the latest fire suppression, fire safety systems. There are a number of different off-site traffic improvements that we have spoken about with this board, so I just want to bring everyone to where we think we are in some sense of finality. We did meet at the site with the chairman of the board, Mark Pfeifer, and the representative for the town board for this area, and with Mr. Beer, to talk about what we thought were the most appropriate improvements. So I'll start with the triangle that everyone knows is the Fairview Avenue extension. And Phil is here to supplement in case I miss something, so hopefully I don't. Currently, the two Fairview Avenue extensions operate as two-way movements. So what we're proposing is the upper extension be a one-way only going northbound, and the lower extension be a one-way only going southbound. Now, we're going to talk about that a minute with Mark, if we can bring him up here, because I think he has some good suggested improvements, but that's, that's where, where we were. We're proposing traffic control in both of these areas, meaning a reduction in the parking width, or the lane width of the road on the southbound side, just to narrow that down to slow cars down as they're coming around that corner. We would be adding striping. There's very little to any striping there now, just to identify where people are supposed to be driving and channelized drivers. At the top of the hill, I call it, so if you're going on Fulton Avenue away from Marist, away from Route 9, there would be a three-way traffic control. So if you're driving up that road, up that hill, there's no stop sign. You'll have through movement. The other three locations would have stop signs. So if you're on the Fairview Avenue extension, if you're going westbound on Fulton, or if you're coming off the little side road that actually lines up there. So those cars would have to stop, the other movement would be a full movement. Did I get that right? Okay. We're also proposing traffic calming through road narrowing. I think you've heard this before about our project, and we're doing this in conjunction with Marist College. So a reduction of Fulton Avenue from 30 feet down to 24 feet, so that we can add a sidewalk on the southbound side of Fulton Street. And that would carry the sidewalk from our project down to the Marist project, and from the Marist project, I believe, down to Route 9. And that's in that area. Okay, now, we are also proposing shifting to the other side of the project over on Cedar Avenue. If you recall, this extension was proposed to be an ingress only for emergency vehicles. So there would be a bollards gate that the fire department could control, emergency vehicles could control, so it was supposed to be an ingress only. The neighbor had discussed concerns about that, and so after meeting with her and the town met with her, it was concluded that we'll provide her with an access point onto this roadway. So she has desired to be able to get in and out of her house via this driveway, and a small portion of, therefore, this section of the road will be two-way. So those last two areas that I pointed out will be two-way to allow her to get in and out. So there'll be appropriate striping, road width, and so forth, for her to be able to get in and out. And then the balance of the emergency vehicles would come in. And that's the proposed location for the bollards or the gate. We did provide you with these building renderings in the beginning of the project, so I just wanted to kind of circle back to them, so you could see what we're proposing, the four-story buildings. This was a view looking eastbound of the courtyard. Another aerial view. We brought, again, the United Management Group this evening, so I wanted to give them an opportunity to speak. If you recall, they came last time, and they'll be the group that we're selecting, and we're finalizing our contract with them for this particular project. So I know there were some concerns at prior meetings, or some questions that you had for them, and so we thought it would be appropriate to bring them down tonight, in case there's any additional information that you saw that we could provide that to you as part of the next submission for the project. So I'll turn this over to them, if you have any questions that you want to go over with them tonight, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, we'll just let them... Or do you want to wait until the end? Do you want to wait until the end, in case there's questions?
Yeah, it's way too, there's questions, right.
Okay, this is their slide. I think I provided everyone with their references, their website, and some other information that they had provided. Okay, so that brings us kind of back to where we are tonight, which is to review this particular application for site plan review approval. And we have everyone here again this evening to answer any questions that you have. Okay?
You're gonna have Mark come up and talk about the...
Yeah, do you want to go back to that slide, and we'll start with that?
Are you done with it?
Yes.
Yes.
I am, okay. Let's go back to that. Do you want to grab a chair?
We've had a bunch of different options here. Last time we were out in the field, I think you were there too, John, when we went out. Don was with us on the, on the top of, actually, if you're going west on Fulton Street, as Kelly referred to, the top part of Fairview Avenue.
Do we have a pointer, do you have a pointer?
I don't. Oh, okay, Kelly, you have it.
Getting fancy. I'll reach up there, right here. This area, we had mentioned, it's a stop going, going west. We mentioned that we would turn left this way. We would widen out this road, and we would, we would make a left-hand turn there. Instead, it's, it's difficult to get down to the bottom of the hill and take a left here. That's a pretty tricky turn. So we mentioned if it was possible to widen this out, and everybody would go left. We would have a yield sign for these guys coming up. I'm pretty shaky here, aren't I? We'd have a yield sign right there, and then, you know, this, this traffic would go around and through. So that, that would be it, that was one of the changes we had. And we also had before, like, there'd be a stop sign here, then back a certain distance, we'd have a stop sign that, they make them now, they're solar, and they have lights around them, and it would flash to say "stop ahead". It's a solar panel, so that, because it's a pretty tricky area coming up too. I want, I, I want people to know there's a stop sign coming to them, so there would be a few of those. That, that was basically our, our, the change that, we had come up with that in the field that day. I didn't know if it was still possible to do that. I didn't know if it was possible to widen all that. If it is, I think it would make a better, a better turn.
So Mark, if I'm not mistaken, on Vassar Road, there's a bad curve right by Vassar School?
Yes.
And there is a light back about 150 feet or so, that kind of is a warning?
Yeah.
Is that the kind of idea that you...
Similar, I've seen them now, actually, I've seen them out in Polquay, where I've seen them. It's, it's an actual shape of a stop sign, and it just says "stop ahead", and all around the perimeter, it's got flashing lights going all the time.
The one on Vassar is similar, but it's only got one flashing red light, I believe.
It might even be yellow, it might be, I'm not sure, I think it's yellow.
Yellow, okay.
And at night, you know, it would...
But anyway, it's a warning sign, it's really kind of saying, yeah.
Right.
You got a hill and a stop sign coming.
So I, I think that's important there.
And is it a three-way stop sign there?
That one, the way we have proposed to be a stop sign here, one on Fairview Avenue extension coming out, and then one over here coming this way out.
You can't see the third road, but it's where the arrow is.
Yeah, there's another road right there.
Yeah, there's actually a third road there.
It comes out here.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Stop sign there, here, and here.
So coming up the hill, there'd be no stop sign. That way, in case, you know, because it's a pretty good hill in the wintertime, people are getting going.
That's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah. That sounds like a better solution.
And we have no objection to those, so we'll make those changes.
What, you know, I, coming off this curve here, what's the line of sight for somebody trying to look over their shoulder at that yield sign?
Well, that's why I thought that this, this lane here should be the yield. And that way, when these people are coming, they have the right-of-way, they go right through. So that they don't have to look back. They can just travel right through, and, and the people coming up off of Fulton have to, have the yield for them.
Yeah, but coming up off of Fulton, I mean, to try to look back over your shoulder to tell whether there's somebody coming or not...
Well, the way that, that hill really goes up, I think you'd be looking right at them. I, I don't think that's a hard spot. I, I think it's better than making, if you make these people yield, that's a real tough spot to look.
Well, I was just wondering whether it should be a yield or a stop sign.
Oh, it, it could be a stop sign.
I mean, I agree with you, I think that...
Okay. But, but yeah, if, if it would seem better to the, you know, traffic-wise and everything, it could be a stop sign, sure.
Because I've seen other intersections like that, and if you don't have good visibility...
And that would, that would slow them down a little bit more, too.
Somebody's come flying up that curve like they do.
Like they do, that's true, yeah.
And they see the yield, and then they, oh, suddenly it's too late.
Right, yeah, you're right, stop sign might be better.
We had looked at that as, at a stop sign control at one of the iterations. And we're also narrowing down the width there to try to slow people down. But I think the alternative that we had with the stop sign, we did a little adjustment at the end where the, the two roads meet, so that your line of sight was better. I, I think that was part of the, the widening that Mark's referring to, that we had looked at before. And then, I, I think in this case, it would be better to bring them to the stop. You're gonna have the, you know, the line of sight coming up to see that, so...
Yeah.
Mark, Mark's our traffic consultant. Yourself is on the record.
Mark Petrow from JMC, reviewing the traffic for the town. Don't have an objection to really having the eastern leg of Fairview have another lane going the other direction. The one-way coupling system that we have shown right there is more beneficial. But the line of sight would be something of concern as you're coming down the western, sorry, eastern leg of Fairview.
Coming down this way?
And making the left down Fairview, as they were saying. I believe the one that is on the western leg coming down, looking over your shoulder, trying to see if someone's coming from Fulton, would be a little bit of concern, and maybe they would, maybe they...
They're proposing to put a stop here now instead of...
Instead of a yield. I, I, you know...
That's, that's really my, I mean, that's my major concern with that.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we got clear tonight, so we had a good direction.
How was it for a fire truck, though, to make that turn?
To make the left up here, to make this left?
If you're coming west, you gotta get down to turn, right?
It would make the turn off Fulton, and then it would have a straight maneuver. No, it's gonna be two-way.
That's what we're talking about.
Do you have another slide that shows this, do you have a slide that shows this two-way?
No, I don't think she does.
Do you have a slide that shows it two-way?
Sorry, no, I don't.
Plan A, B, or C?
I don't. It was C, yeah. We, we, Mark had suggested switching it to two-way. I presented it as one-way.
Are you back to the June?
He, I think Mark makes a good point that maybe the left-hand turn at the top of the hill is the better place to make it. So we're, we're agreeing tonight to keep that two-way, and if there's a, you know, a widening that we need to do, we would do that.
Yeah, I think that road is only 15 feet wide.
Yeah.
So if you had an emergency vehicle like a fire truck and another truck, they couldn't get it. So the road would have to be widened.
That's, that's part of the, the plan would be for widening that leg.
Yeah, but if I could point out too, the conversation is about plans that will need to be presented to the board for the next meeting. One of the reasons that we're recommending actually deferring action on, on the application tonight is the need to get this straight, so that the board has a, a set of drawings that actually represent everything that we're talking about here. What you see here is not what you would be asking.
The next meeting, all the points that we talked about in the maps will be correct, with the widening shown, and the radiuses, and everything, make sure that everything works for fire trucks.
Turning drop radius, yes.
With the turning movement, so you can see how it's all spelled.
Promise?
Yes, that's a promise. Right, Kelly?
I'll promise that, yes.
Question for legal counsel. This is not the, the plan that was included in the negative declaration. Does, does the neg deck have to be altered to reflect this change?
No, I don't think so. This is, these are not material changes that would affect the negative declaration.
Yeah, I mean, we, we also provided in the neg deck, as I recall, it stated that there were still site plan and off-site improvements, the details of which still needed to be worked out.
It's, it's very specific about the, the traffic pattern.
The, the traffic studies that were compiled looked at both altern, actually, three different alternatives here. And it was evaluated with the eastern leg being a two-way roadway also. So as part of the summary traffic report that the board asked us to put all the pieces together, because there are about three or four different iterations, in the summary traffic report that was referenced in the negative declaration had this scenario looked, evaluated from a traffic flow standpoint, so...
I just wanted to be certain, for unstated reasons... Understood. That the neg deck is very specific about the, the traffic flow.
So in other words, we looked at the, the board looked at it as two-way before, correct?
Which?
You've looked at it both as a one-way, and as I recall, and, and as a two-way, correct, lane?
If I can do it, it was two-way, right?
So the idea here is that we're, I want to get everybody together, obviously, to get all these questions on the table, so that when you come back the next time, we have the right maps. We want to make sure everything, all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and we have everything, you know, not leaving any to, to speculation or confusion, all right? So that's, that's where we're going with it.
Phil, did you look at the engineering for that widening, that eastern leg? So that, can it be, to determine whether or not such widening that would also permit a fire truck could be accommodated within the right-of-way, or whether work beyond the right-of-way would be required?
All the widening would be in the existing right-of-way.
At some point, Mark, you had talked about letting him use some of that triangle?
Yeah, actually, they're not using any of it at this time.
I don't think that we're gonna need it.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't appear that way. If they have to take a little of the back hill to widen, that's not gonna affect anything.
Okay, thank you.
What if you brought up the northbound Fairview, Mark, don't go way down. What if you brought up the northbound Fairview up a little higher, so that it's not such a curve, and the site visibility might be a little better?
So I headed the wrong way. Here?
Northbound Fairview here?
Oh.
The northbound curve.
Like one of the plans.
You brought that, Mark, up here.
Well, that's south, I'm sorry.
It's only, it's one-way south.
This is one-way south?
One-way south, yes. Correct.
Okay, southbound, but I've got you.
But my point is, if you brought it over this way and left it two-way, you would cut down some of that site visibility problem, I think.
Well, this site, this site, this site visibility problem came into play and was of such a concern when the entrance was over here. And now what we're doing is, if we stop these vehicles, we have a stop bar, it becomes less of a concern, and it allows us to keep that vegetation. We were really hoping to keep that as a screening buffer.
Consideration.
Yeah, that's why there was such a big easement that we were talking about doing for screening.
One of the nice things about this, as an aside, and we were out in the field, people that were going down this way, they had to wait out here to see what was coming. And the UPS guys were having a problem. The FedEx guys are smart enough to go this way. But it, it, that'll help that situation.
It's a function of how high the leaf pile is.
Or the snow pile.
I'm sorry, Mark.
Or the snow pile.
Snow pile.
It's not there for long.
So this is, Mark, this is just a suggestion and recommendation, right? It's not something that, and the question is, what about your snow trucks? Are you okay with that too, coming down, you know, in the, in the middle of the winter?
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll have a problem. We always take a right, you know, when we come. I, my snowplow truck wouldn't take a left coming down Fulton, it wouldn't take that left. We, we would go straight all the way down, we'd come back. My trucks always go to the right because of the wings on them. So it, it wouldn't affect us at all.
Okay.
It shouldn't be a problem.
I, I think it's a great suggestion, too. It'll make it, the roads wire better and more, I, I think more visible.
Hope so, it's a tough area right there.
It is, I go by there almost every day.
Yeah.
Who would be responsible for the maintenance of the, the warning light on Fulton?
Who's gonna pick up the maintenance on that?
It's sol, it's solar, so it shouldn't, shouldn't be a big issue for that. The, the ones I've seen, they have the little solar panel on the back of them. I don't think there's any, you know, there's no electric to be put to.
Let's just say, let's just say it breaks, then who, who has to bear the, the cost of repair?
Well, it's a, it's an improvement that we're doing to the town road. So all of the sign will be per Mark's code, whatever he requires.
If the improvement gets turned over to the town, it becomes the town's responsibility at that point, if it's...
Just like every other sign.
The town road.
What would, Mark, what would you suggest the distance be between the warning sign and that stop sign?
I, I think we'd have to do that on, out in the field, you know?
That's, it's based on, yeah, the manual uniform traffic control devices gives specific distances that we have to be within. But we'll place, we'll go out with Mark and locate it, because that range of distances, also, you want it to be the best visible approach to that, so...
Keep in mind that the people who travel that, that road, I'm not gonna say generally, but frequently do not obey the 30 mile an hour speed.
Absolutely.
So it would have to be placed, I think, at an appropriate distance to take that into...
Yeah, we, we collected, as part of the traffic studies, we have the speed data along Fulton, and I believe the 85th percentile in that stretch was actually closer to 40 miles an hour. So that comes in as part of the design placement. You have to use the 85th percentile speed to determine that.
I need to move along.
Okay, are we, we're good? Okay, so we'll go to the, I'm just gonna flip down, I'm gonna flip down to the end. Thank you, Mark.
I'd like to, any questions for the...
Should I turn on the light?
Yeah, in fact, when you change your slides for the next one, could you make the background a little less bright?
You don't like the light?
That's killing my eyes. You gotta mute that a little bit.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. I want to keep everyone awake and make sure you're awake. Okay, would, do you have any questions for the, the United Group?
I just have one question, Kelly. Is, is the group gonna be involved in the construction, in a, a project, you know, construction model, and, you know, site that, you know, ideas or whatever?
Do you want to come up? Yeah.
Sit down, identify yourself, please.
Yes, thank you. My name's Jeff Arnold, I'm the chief operating officer for United Group. I oversee our, all of our management of the county.
The question was, are you going to be involved in the construction, the design, the rooms, and so forth? And the answer is yes, but you can probably do it better.
Absolutely. We are helping initially already, looking at some of the documents. As we move forward, after we have more market study, and we'll get more involved on what the actual floor plans look like, and make suggestions towards parking and things like that. Thank you, Jeff.
I'm sure there were, there ought to be a lot of...
Well, are, are you gonna do the regular thing? As long as you're at the traffic stuff, though, I'm, I'm still gonna ask that the Lake Street possibility be looked at again?
The Lake Street access?
Has a possible access in excellent. And also, Kelly, did you ever get in touch with CRX? Any possibilities there?
We are working, we really are working on it. The, you make calls, and you get no one, you have to keep calling and calling and calling. We're trying to get the county...
Our friends at Marist, I know, have been through that rather extensively, and they might be able to give you some numbers that may not have some other access. But that could be a great access point if, if that was ever available.
We would love it, I mean, we think it's a great, we're also talking to the county to see what their involvement is as far as an extension of the rail trail, and to see what, what role they may play.
I apologize too to the applicants, because I know this thing is going around and around and around, and I'm sure it's not, not the cheapest thing going on, so...
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Question for United Group?
Could we just go back to Lake Street, though? Because we have looked at that, and I think the town's traffic consultant explained last week, or last month, why it really is a problem, because you... week or last month why it really is a problem, because you have terrible horizontal and vertical site, horizontal and vertical curve with the site distance. So do you want to just take two minutes?
I remember seeing Phil's write-up a little bit in this.
What would you like to say?
There's, Phil?
There was, correct, in the July 23 report on page six, we looked at all the alternatives, and there are two issues with Lake Street. One is the grade on Lake itself, but more importantly is the sight line exiting, looking to the north, the vertical curve comes into play there. And we don't meet the sight distance criteria for making left turns out of that onto Fairview northbound.
Yeah, I was really looking at that last time around as another possibility, more so than the one that was on the triangle, so.
It's almost one that, I hate to say this, but a picture isn't worth a thousand words, that you almost have to go and stand there and you saw, yeah, then you can see.
Good out there, I saw that, but I was really making the comparison of the one right down at the triangle almost. Jeez, six of one, half dozen the other one. I'll look at this.
Okay, okay. Is there anything else that you would want? We're going to go around the board, but I just don't want to leave out United, so in case we need to get anything from them for the next decision.
I thought there'd be more questions for United Group, but I guess we're good. My speaker.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Okay, let's go around the.
You know, I don't want to, you know, a lot of points have been covered tonight, so I'm not going to repeat things. And staff had discussed the possibility of trying to move forward on this, but there are just enough issues where there are too many question marks that it makes sense to defer at this point. So basically, some of the points I just want to raise would be if we could get clear on the calculation of the number of bedrooms and parking and just, that's a little bit of a moving target. I mean, I have some other comments where we need some more clarity about the extent of sidewalks, when will that be built? The same is true of the stone dust path through the open space, you know, a little more clarity on that, and how does that fit into phasing, and where does the sidewalk end and the stone dust path begin? I understand in regards to the access to West Cedar Street that we now have a little more clarity on the ownership, on the proposed ownership of that strip of land. What was throwing us off in our review was notation on the plan that talked about offer of session to the town. So, you know, some more detail on that would be helpful, so we can review it based on what it is. I don't want to add too much more.
And you have copies of all, they have copies of your comments, right?
What?
They have copies of your comments.
Yes.
Latest comments. Okay, good, thank you. Open the public hearing?
I move we open the public hearing, second.
Moved in second, we open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? No one has signed up, but. Please step up to the microphone, state your name.
Which?
Behind you, there's one behind you, too.
Oh, I didn't see this. Jimmy Beakley Windsor Court. Jimmy Beakley Windsor Court. These are my personal comments, and my personal comments alone, please don't misconstrue them as coming from any other person or entity. I travel Fairview Avenue every day, mostly every day when I go out, maybe sometimes it's only three, four times a week. But I'm constantly involved with that intersection. We're taking an intersection that has a fair amount of traffic already and going to be adding a great deal of traffic to it, with students going back and forth to class, back and forth to their apartment. I'm, I can't say to you how important it is to me, any decision you make on what to do with this intersection. When you try to make a left out of Fairview Avenue, you've got a hill on both sides. Now, I'm not sure I was understanding your pictures up there exactly correct. So it's the people going east on Fulton that are going to go straight through.
Mm-hmm.
They'll not have a stop sign of any kind.
Correct.
And that hill on Fulton.
Basically up the hill, yeah.
Right, and that, but that hill on Fulton Street is not going to be cut down at all. Your sight distance is not going to be improved at all when you're making a left out of Fairview Avenue onto Fulton Street to head down to Route 9. And then you've got a hill coming down in the other direction. I believe that's the one where you said you're going to have this flashing light and warning people that there's a stop sign down there? Is it, am I correct in that? I mean, I just think in the winter, that's going to be dangerous, because you've got people coming down a hill to a stop sign, yes, they're warned. What if it's icy? And what if they're doing 40, 45? You know, I just, I just see that, that whole intersection as an entire nightmare, and I cannot express to you how important it is to me to be extremely careful, review it, re-review it, practice it. Make sure we get it right, so we don't make a bad situation worse. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and see no one else, we, I move we adjourn the public hearing until November 20th, 2014.
Second.
Moved in second, call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Go around the board. Ed.
Me?
I was having a moment there.
Well, as long as I'm on it. A couple of other things I really wanted to make sure that we took a look at. The open space area, that needs to be cleaned out entirely, that's a mess. I walked through that area, and I know you're going to do some work in there, and a stone gravel path or something, dirt, but the area's got an awful lot of debris in there. I think that has to be part of the conscious decision to clean that up. Parking, yeah, I realize.
I'm sorry, Ed, do you mean like garbage? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. A lot of the neighbors, the neighbors just dump, yeah, they just dump back there.
Even along the roadway of Fairview, there's all kinds of junk that's been thrown there for years and so forth.
Okay.
But even interior-wise, where I met the deer herd.
I can't do anything about that.
That's not the junk that I'm referring to, but there's a, there's a lot of junk in there. Parking, yeah, I know by the rules you're in good shape, but I also know kids, and sometimes you get, when you've got a four-bedroom place, sometimes you've got six, sometimes you've got seven. So at any rate, make sure there's plenty of parking. I already mentioned the Lake Street thing. Sidewalks, I'm not quite sure where we're standing at, but at any rate, any kind of sidewalks that can be done there to help improve that area. And I still get back to the children's home and trying to get something from the children's home down, and maybe a cross path across there to the other side. So that's kind of the things that I'd like to see looked at. And again, CRX possibility.
You have comments?
That's it.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to commend you for the work you've done on that, the whole layout. I think you've done a good job looking at almost everything. But the thing that really stands out to me is the traffic, Fulton and Fairview, to get that straightened out. I commend Jenny, Jenny, for coming in tonight. I haven't been to too many meetings, but there has not been a lot of people that live in that area that goes on those two roads every day of the week, coming in and complaining, trying to get, we need, the board needs input from the residents in that area about the driving before we can really go forward on this thing. Because you can see from the board's comments, a lot of the board members have different opinions on what should be there. We need a lot more input. And I think it's up to the residents of that area. And if anybody can do anything to get these people to come in to drive that six, seven days a week, I'd like to see that. That's my biggest thing.
I mean, I hate to bring it up again, but, I mean, that intersection is a bad one, and we've been through a number of iterations. The one thing I can say is by putting the entrance and exit on Fulton, at least we're getting rid of a lot of Fairview problems. So I mean, I think if we address that curve and we get the right kind of signage and so forth, I mean, I think we're probably doing about as well as we can do. As far as, you know, the traffic on Fulton and so forth, I mean, we've just got to do better traffic control there, and I, you know, I don't know how we go about that. I mean, we get the police involved and whatever, but it's not a lot you can do when people, if people want to respond irresponsibly, it's sort of hard to do much about it. Those are my comments.
Carl?
Let's see. Yeah, I mean, you asked about the land bank parking. I think I'd be in agreement with banking that, as you started off, as long as there's an agreement in place.
I think they're doing everything.
That the planning board could decide if, or the department could assess it at some point and say, say the traffic, the parking's getting too bad there, and let's build it.
Okay.
I'm going to send a draft to your counsel on a banked parking agreement.
I think, is there a stand, is there one that you've done before in the town?
We have actually probably something from VAS or Science Project, we could probably adapt to it, yeah.
I can email it to if you want me to.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to depend on how many of those rooms get transit to students versus other neighbor, neighbors, so. Maybe needed quick or not at all. I guess one of my biggest issues I still see is the, on the plan here, the grading, the steep slope coming right down at the rear, we talked about some kind of terracing at some point maybe, but is there an issue of just eroding and runoff and ice in the parking lot and stuff like that? I know there's, if you look at that, there's some other steep hill areas, like the one by the hotel, the IBAM entrance, and it's just horrible, it gets rutted with erosion, and there's weed, you know, just full of weeds, so it's hard to, so I'd appreciate some, something there. I know you said you're going to be looking at that as you go through the contour and see how.
We have, we'll show you at the next meeting what we'll come up with, what we've done and what we, we'll look at it again.
Okay.
We'll show you the next meeting what that is.
Maybe what you find and what rocks you hit and things like that as well, sure. We already talked enough about the traffic issues, but it is a concern there. I was curious, the extent of the sidewalk that you're providing, you have to meet up with what at Marist is coming from the other way, so how far down the hill?
I guess that's up to Justin and I in the boxing ring, I think that's what I've been told, so, I don't know, the money's on me, but.
So it's not all, not all identified yet?
We have to get to an agreement. No, I think we, we do have an agreement, and we'll show it on the plan, so you can see, Liz had brought that up, so that's a clear demarcation, so we know everyone's in agreement where that is.
I have mentioned, you know, in agreeing with Ed, that it feels like there's still that little missing piece to the children's home, that if some residents of this area were to try to walk to the elementary school, for example. I like the, you know, some of the renderings there, this courtyard was, looked nice.
Good, we will bring the architectural stuff next month.
I still, I think I mentioned the last time, if there's some kind of, you know, now especially you're across from the neighbor on Fulton, if there's some kind of entrance feature or landscaping, however it works out, so it looks nice as you're driving into the, to the site. Let's see, I guess with the land bank parking issue, I guess the SWIP has to cover it as if it, as, as if it is parking ahead of time, so.
Yeah, they actually have to show a fully engineered drawing, and then they just don't build that portion.
Okay. All right, I guess that's all I have for now, thanks.
With regard to the sidewalk, consultant letter that we had from back in July mentioned the sidewalk 420 feet in length from your site going west on Fulton, there's, we don't have any detail with regard to that, so that's one thing that we'd like to see. It's my understanding we have not received the SWIP. Is that correct?
I'm going to get this done.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, when you consider the amount of impervious surface and the steep slopes, and it's something that we, and has a geotech study been conducted?
Yes.
Do we have a copy of that?
It hasn't been submitted yet. We've talked to Joe.
We're putting it together, we just talked to him today about that.
We'll have that, do you think, before the next meeting?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You have here detailed in a site layout plan, the stone path, which looks great on a flat piece of paper, but if you look at the grade on that site path, the directions that the path follows does not seem conceivable that anyone, taking a leisurely stroll, be able to use that stone path because of the topography of the site. Would it be, do you want to redo that with the topo, or do you want to relocate it?
What we did is show a generic location of where we thought the stone path could, should go, and we discussed this with Liz a little bit back and forth, and we were hoping that we could show a location, but have the final location, something that's decided between staff and the engineering department. Maybe we go out and stake it in the field, and everyone agrees that that's the location of the path, because there's going to be a lot of grading on the site, and I think it would be best to put that in once we get some of the grades roughed out.
Okay, so there's going to be a lot of fill in that area.
There's, there's fill and cuts. Yeah, so I think if everyone is in agreement, we've shown that for illustrative purposes as a guideline, we'll provide you with a detail for what we think that path, how it would be built, and if everyone is in agreement, we'll put a note on the plan that says the final location would be staked in the field and agreed upon by staff and engineer.
There also, some time ago, there was discussion of retaining walls there. There were actually over 500 feet of retaining walls, are they, is that off the?
Pretty much. There's some, right? We still have, that's not.
Most of the retaining walls have been removed. There's only one small section of retaining wall that still remains, but otherwise, the majority of them have been removed.
Okay. There's also remark on the restriping plan. You have a section here on Fulton, restriping would create a length of asphalt sidewalk, which I don't think is permitted in the town. So would you be, that would be part of your sidewalk, you'd just be?
Again, that whole, what you have there has been, been worked on in the background the whole time, so as part of what we were discussing earlier with the traffic pattern and the enhancements on Fairview and Fulton that we're talking about, that would be including in that sidewalk area, so it's clearer.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Peter.
Well, I think Peter brought up our two main concerns, which I guess have been discussed with the applicant for the next time around, like to see the SWIP and the geotech report, and we have other comments, but those are the two major ones.
Okay. Mark, anything further from you?
Just like to discuss a little further with the applicant in outside meetings regarding the traffic improvements to get that all situated before next meeting.
Okay, good. I'd like to note that Rich Pearson is on South Africa, getting ready to go on a safari. We did hear from him today in an email, just, you know.
Yes, that is true.
So it's nice to know that you're.
How's the traffic?
I haven't heard anything down there yet. He'll be back next week.
I guess we'll be seeing you next week.
And I guess, Mr. Pfeiffer, it's nice to know that we're catching up with Poquay now with a solar-lit LED sign. Okay. Sorry, I forgot Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern is the same as Marvin, because the traffic, and then the previous speaker, there are concerns that that section of that intersection is pretty tough. I think you have a pretty good, you know, resource of people, and with Mark's help, I think you'll find a solution. I would say, you know, it's funny, we all talk about the outside project, but, you know, which is the main concern, so I think you'll, you know, you'll find a solution for a better traffic, because I agree with the previous Madam Speaker before there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move the planning board defer action on this site plan application and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 14, and then 15 would be the comments from the public hearing and the board tonight.
Second. It moves in second is the planning board defer action on the site plan application and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 14 and 15 being comments generated. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Maris College, public hearing number three, Maris College Parking Improvement, St. Anne Site Plan Hearing and Waterfront Consistency Hearing to expand parking area, reconfigure access road on Maris property at the northerly end of the campus. 3399 North Road Zoned IN Institutional and WD-1 Waterfront Overlay District, 26.5 acres, type 1 action, Maris College owner to be adjourned. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to November 20th, 2014.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries 7-0. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the rules to allow comments on any other agenda items, agenda items only.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All the questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries 7-0. Now, this is the time for anyone to comment on any other agenda items. Mr. Mills, was it?
Not at this time.
I'm sorry?
Not at this time.
Oh, okay. I wanted to give you a chance to speak if you wanted.
He's the applicant.
Oh, he's the applicant. Are you the applicant for center point?
I am.
Oh, you'll get to speak then. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I move that we resume the rules?
So moved.
Second. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries 7-0. Plan review, Kissner Lot Line Revision, Lot Line Revision Review for a Lot Line Revision between two parcels, 70 Taft Avenue and Friendly Lane, zoned R20, 1.79 acres. Listed action, Raymond Kissner, Bernard Kissner, and Marie Frank owners.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Spencer Hall and this is Marie Kissner, the applicant.
Welcome.
Frank.
Frank.
Frank, she wasn't Kissner. Okay, I guess I met with Eric and made all the modifications to the map, I believe that was on his checklist. It sits right there now for your perusal. Am I correct in understanding that what we're going to try to do tonight is get a conditional approval based on the zoning board approval?
I think that that's the goal, yes. Yeah, this application, at least in terms of the area variances that are necessary, is on the next Monday's zoning board meeting. 20th, yeah, because Monday was a holiday.
So the zoning board meets this Monday?
Yeah, the meeting got moved up a week.
Because of a holiday.
Because of a holiday.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, a couple of things to iron out in the plan, but we can handle that as conditions of approval, minor changes, but the most important point is the procedural change in our recommendation. As Neil mentioned, the zoning board, due to the vagaries of the calendar, we're recommending that the board rescind its lead agency declaration, because if we had done that, the zoning board wouldn't be able to act next Monday, and instead, we're recommending that the board rescind the lead agency declaration and consider taking action on an uncoordinated review of the application. By doing it that way, it would allow the zoning board to proceed with its review this Monday.
Okay, that sounds fair. Sounds fair to me.
Can we do that first?
Well, and we're recommending that the board, you know, adjust the procedure and then proceed with a conditional.
All right. Before we move ahead, I think we'll just see if there's any comments from the board.
Yeah.
Okay. Marvin, anything?
No.
Rich? Carl?
No, nothing on this further.
Peter?
No.
Joe?
No.
Ed?
No.
Okay. You're hidden behind Marvin there.
He couldn't read my lips.
I move that the planning board hereby rescind its September 18th, 2014 declaration of intent to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review for the proposed project as an unlisted action. Second.
Moved in seconded, the planning board hereby rescind its September 18th, 2014 declaration of intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries 7-0.
We're going to adjourn the discussion.
I think we're good.
Okay. I move that the planning board determine that the Kissner Lot Line Revision Application is an unlisted action for an uncoordinated secret review and that it will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated October 16, 2014, prepared by the planning department. Second.
We moved in second, the planning board determine that the Kissner Lot Line Revision Application is an unlisted action for an uncoordinated secret review and it will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the negative declaration dated October 16, 2014, prepared by the planning department. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries 7-0.
I move that the planning board grant conditional Lot Line Revision Approval for the Kissner Lot Line Revision Application and grant a 60-day time extension of said approval from December 15, 2014 forward to February 13, 2015, subject to the following. Responding to the following in writing, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness 1 through 8. Second.
We moved in second, the planning board grant conditional Lot Line Revision Approval of the Kissner Lot Line Revision Application and grant a 60-day time extension of said approval from December 15, 2014 forward to February 13, 2015, subject to the following, that they respond to the following in writing, said responses to be reviewed by planning department to, as to accuracy, adequacy, and completeness 1 through 8. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries 7-0. Good luck at the zoning board on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Plan review number two, Maris College North Campus Housing, pre-review, I'm sorry, North College, North Campus Housing. Planning boards declare lead agency intent for a two-phase 789-bed housing, bed student housing project, 3399 North Road Zoned IN Institutional, WD-1 Waterfront Overlay Districts, 12.8 acres, type 1 action, Maris College owner.
Justin, is it going to be a pay-per-view match between you and Sally?
Oh, that's bright.
Justin, how's the leg?
Much better, thank you.
Good.
I think I should move. Need less, less bright. Too soon.
It'll be a lullaby.
What you do? There we go. You don't want to know.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Jeff Brackett, Executive Vice President. Here with me is Justin Botwell, Director of Physical Plant, and John Andrews, our site planning engineer. I'd like to go over the overview of our north campus planning. Some of this we've previewed with you, obviously. Would like to take you over the overview first. This is the north part of campus. As you see the outline of the buildings there in its current state with Fontaine Hall. No, if we have a laser. Thank you very much. Fontaine Hall is here. This is obviously the campus gate and access across Route 9. This is the current existing Gartland Commons, 306 beds. It's coming to the end of its life cycle. It's this replacement, which is a significant part of this particular project. This is the fully implemented plan. This is Route 9, so it's a northern perspective. There are two phases to this project. Phase 1 are these two buildings, a total of 465 beds with a projected completion of August 2016. As you see here, phase 2 is the second part of this project that would be on the physical location, the current Gartland Commons, for an additional 324 beds for the following year. The net bed number here is 800, I'm sorry, 483 new beds on campus, replacing 306 beds from the current Gartland Commons, as well as bringing back to campus students that are currently residing in the residence in, as well as students from current off-campus locations. There are a number of drivers for this, but the first thing to understand is this is to house current students. This is not predicated or part of any growth associated with the college to increase our overall total numbers beyond the strategic plan that we currently have. The other key factors that are worth noting here are the importance of bringing these students, 306 students from an older building whose life cycle is coming to an end, into updated, much more modern and safe, state-of-the-art locations, as well as bringing back a significant portion of students who want to be on campus but are living in the community right now. This is not only to consolidate and make this project the living quarters for these students in a supervised, modern facility, and therefore a much safer environment for them, but also to address some of the needs that the town has expressed about that population of students being a large, and you might say, over, I don't want to say quite overwhelming, but a very significant portion of neighborhoods in the region. So there are multiple reasons for this, and we believe it'll address a number of issues that will benefit the community. Building A, the first floor, floor plan is before you now. This would be the inner quad, if you will. Route 9 is on the right-hand side, so the primary entrance, main entrance is into this part of the building. The lobby, laundry, staff, and common areas, including security, obviously for college students, security is paramount, swipe accessibility supervised by our staff. The upper floors in Building A are before you now, the lighter and dark brown, simply signify different units. As you'll see in detail in a few more slides, these are what are known as quad singles, single bedrooms, along with common areas for those four students in that unit. The Building B, that would be the one furthest north and west in this project, includes the entry point here, which would be the easternmost point of the building, along with the similar security and access points to the U-shaped building that I showed before. In addition to the rooms themselves, there are pocket lounges, study lounges throughout the project as well. The upper floor is similar with another Hudson River facing lounge at the end of it for that population of student, and students in that building. Building C is the first section of that Phase 2, so August 2017 project, which would be on the physical location of the current Gartland Commons. We are envisioning here lobby, staff, and common areas, in addition to fitness center type of facility on that northernmost building of Phase 2. The upper floors of that building are similarly accommodated with the units, as well as a terminal lounge there facing the Hudson. For Building D, which is the southermost building of Phase 2, there are a number of areas to highlight here. One is the entrance, which would be directly opposite the northern building for the laundry, staff, and common areas, as well as a cafe, and we are also envisioning, then, we've got general space that has yet to be allocated here, generally going to be office and classroom space, function space. The upper floor is, again, very similar in its layout with the terminal lounge and the quad singles spaced throughout. This is a computer-generated mock-up of that first building in Phase 1, so Route 9 would be just at the other end of this building. This is the main entrance, the north campus entrance, and the main entree into this building, as I said before, is in the inner quad. This is the drawing from across Route 9, what this will look like, pretty much from the McDonald's or the mobile station there, accenting the similar architecture that we began with the, to build on in our master planning with the campus gates, but it does open a vista onto the Hudson River, which currently is blocked by the vinyl siding of Gartland Commons right now. In Phase 1, there will be a total gross square footage of 184,000, primarily the suites, mostly four-bedroom, some three-bedroom suites, as well as a smattering of single rooms and RA and RD apartments for supervision of these students. Phase 2 is similar in that they are primarily four-bedroom suites, as well as some RA and RD apartments. There are common areas and fitness and food service areas, as I highlighted before, for an allocation of 134,000 gross square feet. There is, as I mentioned, a non-residential program associated with that building, classrooms, administrative offices, event spaces, et cetera, totaling a little over 12,000 square feet. So this is the mock-up of the quad single. Nothing like this existed when I was an undergraduate, I have to tell you, but this is the common area and then the single beds. The design incorporates sinks outside of the shower and the commode, which would allow the maximum flexibility for the four students who are sharing that space with a kitchenette function built in and some common space. So are any questions on that part of the presentation? I'd like to hand it over to John Andrews. Happy to answer questions afterwards, as well as you see fit.
I was just curious, the, like, what's the size of a single bedroom then turn out? Is it like 10 by 12 or something like that?
It's about 100 square feet.
Okay, thanks.
Jeff, I just have a question.
Jeff, I just have a question. Looking from McDonald's to the building, by the way, great building, are you going, you know, encounter traffic, student traffic, like you had a problem previous on, from the main gate?
Right. I'm sorry. No, it's a good question. We don't believe so, primarily because there will be a food service that is in the second phase of the building, as well as a fitness center, and the primary draw for those students will be back to classes, all of which are on the east camp, I'm sorry, the west campus, but south of where they are. Currently, there are 306 beds, students who are there right now, with nothing to draw them there, and we don't have any appreciable traffic across Route 9 right now, with 306 students and no cafe and no workout space. And so, we don't anticipate that there will be any additional as a result of that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you know how big a timeframe you're looking at between the two phases?
We plan on a year. So Phase 1, opening August 2016, and Phase 2, then the following August. So, that's the, Phase 1 would allow us to take down Gartland, because we can't, the worst thing we could do would be to take down Gartland and then have 300 students that need to be housed, you know, in the community. So, that's very carefully planned, and we believe that all of our planning up to this point indicates that the capability will be there. Certainly, once those students are housed, then that primary site for Phase 2 is open and ready to go.
Sounds good. Jeff, I just had a question. Are you gonna, is the name gonna remain in the building, or are you gonna change the name to the new building?
It's a naming opportunity, Joseph. I just wanted to let you know.
I'll take the two floors.
No, we, it's a good point. Could we go back to the, I'll just point out, there are, we have the general plan here. For this area, we will memorialize Gartland, obviously. This will be probably known as Gartland Commons as it is. As you know, that's a very important family college, and it's a very important location in the history of the college. In the plan, it's worth, I just want to note here, this is the old John Flack Winslow Estate, and very historic, important figure in the region, and he was the gentleman who convinced Abraham Lincoln to build the Monitor, the first Ironsides in the U.S. history, and it was the Monitor and Merrimack Battle during the Civil War. And he financed it himself in order to prove to President Lincoln that it would work. And so, we are memorializing this site with a half replica of the Monitor there as a garden and a gathering place for students. So we're very conscious of the historical significance of the land on which, you know, we're building this, but Gartland is a very important name and will be appropriately recognized. But we're also reaching back into the proud history of the region in order to emphasize some of that for the future generations.
What is that feature on the south side of the Phase 2 building?
This is a courtyard garden.
Courtyard garden, okay.
Did you call, make that the Carl?
I'm not sure my checkbook has that.
I think I'll bring our Vice President for Advancement to the next meeting. Sure. Well, I'd be happy to hand it over to John Andrews for details on the site plan, if you'd like.
Thank you very much. I'm hoping you can all see this. Probably need to, lights on.
Turn some lights on.
I'm still a little bit old-fashioned, so apologize.
I'm with you, John, sorry.
Just to make sure everybody understands, this is Route 9. This is the current Marist College North Gate. Gartland Commons sits right in front of you as you drive in that gate. Fontaine Hall is to the one side. The small Fontaine Annex is to the other side. Fontaine Annex, for those of you who've been around a long time, is the old bank building. Basically, it's, as Dr. Brackett said, it's a two-phase project. Phase 1 is Building A and Building B. Building A and the associated parking lot will essentially occupy the parking lot that currently exists there. The northern limits of our disturbance are effectively the northern limits of that current parking area. Building B will kind of fit at the north end of that last Gartland Common building. There's a parking lot there now. Building B will occupy most of that parking lot. We do have to cut a little bit into the hill, so there is a proposed retaining wall, et cetera, in order to get that in. Again, this is a two-phase project. Gartland Commons must remain open, operable, and usable by our students as we build around them. So, there's, it presents some challenges to us, but I think we can make it work. One of the interesting features is, I think if you're all familiar with the site, there's a road at the south end of the current Gartland Commons that runs down to the Marist Courts at the back. They're on a lower elevation, on a plateau above the river. And at the back of Gartland Commons now, there's a wall and there's a hill, and you can kind of overlook and see the river. One of the things that's lost, as Dr. Brackett said, is that view of the river. So if you look carefully at the design, the architect spent a lot of time and drove some of us site engineers, like Justin and myself, a little crazy, but what their intent was, was to open views direct to the river. So if you look, there's a straight-line opening so that you can look out over the river. As you drive in our driveway, there will be a straight-line view to the river. So what they wanted to do is try to link the river to Marist, to the community, and that was their goal in kind of laying this out. Couple things to note, our main entry is staying in the same spot. We are doing some slight reconfiguration, again, in that keeping of creating a linear approach so that you can see to the river. What we'll be doing is actually taking advantage of the width that's there, modifying the island a little bit. We'll have a two-lane in and a one-lane out. It's being, the center is being shifted slightly to the south, so it lines up exactly with the center of those two buildings, but other than that, it'll essentially stay the same. Along the top of the slope, there is currently a wall. It's a little bit higher than a traditional sitting wall, but what we're gonna do is replace that wall with the traditional Marist sitting wall, the 18 to 24-inch walls that you've seen throughout. So this will have an opportunity for students, again, to sit and view the river. There are a couple spots where the grades are not as favorable, so we will have some full-height retaining walls, so they kind of have to have a little higher parapet, and that's particularly down at this north corner, this south corner here. What we're proposing to do is, since most of the utilities for Gartland Common are kind of self-contained in the area of Gartland Commons, what we're proposing to do to serve Phase 1 with utilities, we're gonna make a new water connection at the north to the Town of Poughkeepsie Water System, meter pit, et cetera. We're gonna run a connection down. We will ultimately connect to Gartland Commons once we do away with it, but we're actually bringing that water line all the way down the center road of the campus and connecting to the existing water lines at the south. So we have kind of a full loop through there. Right now, Gartland Commons has a pumping station for sewage. The pumping station is located kind of tucked between two buildings, believe it or not, and it pumps out to a manhole on Route 9. Because of the way these buildings are oriented, Building A will be able to flow by gravity to the Town of Poughkeepsie system. There's actually a sanitary manhole right out the front. That will flow by gravity, but the balance of these buildings have to go to a pumping station, which we'll put down at the lower elevation. We'll bring it in. Unfortunately, we got a rather circuitous force main route to serve, because we have to keep Gartland Commons working, but we will be putting in a brand-new pumping station that will ultimately take care of all three buildings. Couple other modifications we're making, if you're familiar, access to the Marist playing fields. It's a little difficult right now. The entrance is a little narrow. It's a little awkward configuration. We're going to be making that a more formalized connection to improve that road, and hopefully, we would like ultimately to work with the water plant and get some of their trucks that currently use our main entrance to perhaps use this other area. So we're taking that opportunity to make this a more truck-friendly exercise. One other thing, again, Dr. Brackett said, Marist College has always had a sidewalk along the main road. Typically, the sidewalks along the main roads are only six foot in width. We've decided, because of the number of students here, we've widened this one out to a full eight-foot, to give them, so we have a much wider sidewalk along this frontage to, again, encourage the students to funnel back down campus. We've made some crossings here at Fontaine. We have some crossings here. If you're familiar with the pattern that we tried to establish in front of Foy and other places, we're attempting to do away with the speed bumps. They would be raised crosswalks, effectively the same thing, but to kind of slow the traffic down for the students. Let's see, couple other minor features. There is a service courtyard here. You might have saw, seen on one of the renderings that said loading dock. It's not truly a loading dock, but it is a service area. As they indicated, there is a cafe here. There are some other uses administratively and classroom-type that sometimes require an area where you can, you know, kind of be hidden from the public. So there's kind of like a false wall here, so that will be a hidden courtyard. It is a service entry. It's nothing more. And again, it's, we have access down off the side road. This, as was shown, is an interior plaza, but there's also a walkway so that you kind of get connected between these buildings and go around the back. One of the features that Marist has always had, and we've worked very closely with the fire department in terms of getting fire department access, if you saw in your package, we have fire department access that we actually talked to Chief Mater about. We can actually get a fire truck all the way around the back of these buildings, and we made the turns such that they could turn around and drive back out. So they're the standard Marist College, 14-foot-wide walkway. Some places, they bump out to 20 because of the angles that the truck needs to take. But again, a fire truck can go all the way around to the back of these buildings. It can pull out here. It can pull out there, and they actually asked that we change the radii so the fire truck could actually pull down the center of this courtyard and service buildings on either side. Stormwater, the plans are still in somewhat of flux, but you'll notice on the plans Marist had a number of years ago, I think we were one of the first here to use a bioretention area that exists along the interior road. That's going to stay. We're going to add a bioretention area between the back of this building at Route 9, because there's, the stone wall that exists there will not be disturbed, so that kind of gives us an opportunity there. Then there's a couple other opportunities around to add bioretention areas in these open areas. The only place we're kind of somewhat limited is this is going to be a formal garden gathering space, so it's gonna be a more traditional appearance, so we're gonna have to play some games there. We do need one variance for this project, and it's a front yard setback, and it's for an interesting reason. If you look at our front property line, when DOT puts in all these little bus pull-offs along Route 9, they actually did a taking, so they have a 10-foot little section where they took the front of our property. The front yard setback is 50 feet. We meet it on either side of that bump out, but at the bump out, it's only 40 feet, so we will need a variance. We didn't think it was a substantial one, but to just simply move the whole building back, it kind of shortened our ability to accommodate the number of classrooms. And again, because we have to keep Gartland Commons open, this main road, basically, we didn't change it, and that actually drives the bus. All the elevations for these buildings are based off that main road, so what you see there really isn't gonna change that much. The finished floor on this building is slightly below Route 9 here. The finished floor on this building is about, is slightly below that, and then these are lower yet. So again, it's that whole idea of making sure that you can see through this campus and out to the river.
Well done. Well done, thank you. Okay.
Let's see. Staff didn't generate formal written comment, review comments on this, because it's only on for lead agency, but just in looking at it and talking about it with other staff over the last couple of weeks, for the next, for the next round, there are some issues that kind of present themselves in overview fashion that we would like, we would recommend addressing in a next submittal. One will be the parking. That has been a frequent topic of discussion with the planning board recently. We appreciate that Marist updated the master plan some years back, and even in relatively recent history, just a couple of years back, went through some projections of parking and where it was going. But with this substantial increase in dorm space on campus, this is a new area, it's a substantial number that's moving around. I think the board may want to consider seeking kind of a revised parking plan for the campus in order to understand how the parking for this development is going to work into all these changes on campus. And with that said, also, the separate application for the St. Anne's proposal, we could have some, we'd be open to some additional discussion, but it might be actually to your benefit, as well as for the ease of review, to combine the applications, because they're all going to be related with the parking and the impervious surface and the SWIP and other things. Related to that also, to these numbers, there may or may not, with the next go-round, we'll be looking at whether or not there's gonna be a referral to our traffic consultant for some kind of traffic review. Again, the numbers are going up, the location of vehicles around the campus is changing. In addition, there's some...
And when you say campus, I mean west side and east side?
Correct.
Right. The campus, which encompasses both, right? Both sides of Route 9.
That was, if I may, just to digress one minute, if, to go back. The St. Anne's parking and linking it to this project creates a little bit of a hiccup for us, because to be quite candid, it's kind of like a chicken-or-the-egg situation. I need St. Anne's to be done before this starts, so that, as you suggest, parking is quite an issue here. So if I take offline the current parking at Fontaine Hall to build Building A, I need to have someplace to put all those cars. That's why we kind of jumped St. Anne's ahead, but we had to go back and revisit, because to be quite honest, I laid it out as an engineer, and the architects took a look at it and wanted it laid out a little differently to save some trees, so we've had quite a go-around. But I think our preference, and I understand where you're coming from, Eric, but I think we can make a case, and we plan on doing that for the November 20th meeting, to allow us to proceed with St. Anne's without linking it to this physically as part of one application.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I, like, I can accept, you know, the idea of not combining the applications, but I think that we really are looking more for a contemporaneous review, and what we, I think what we need to do is figure out exactly how we're going to do that procedurally. They are linked, they're close in proximity, and you're absolutely right, and you've talked about that some time ago, about the St. Anne's parking being gotta-have before you can really kind of dig in and start the dorm project, and we understand that. But I think that, you know, there are questions in our mind about some of the seeker process, and, you know, are we engaging in some kind of a segmentation between the two? So I think we need to, I think we need to get them, if we don't link them, get them closer together, at least in terms of how we're processing them, and we just gotta kind of create a path for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Go ahead, Justin, go ahead.
We plan to give an overall parking plan of the campus like we did about five years ago. So we'll describe not only the project that was approved recently, this project, and any other changes we made.
Maybe, just a thought then, if you're already working on preparing that, we should, you know, we're gonna have to discuss this further before your next submittal for St. Anne's, but if you make that a part of the St. Anne's approval, that might provide a pathway. We'll have to talk about that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll offline on that. Have to figure something out.
I think what we'll do is, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to see if we could get permission to meet with your staff and try to kind of chart the proper path, because I do appreciate what Neil and Eric have to say, and I'd like to chart the proper path through here, and it may be that we can kind of follow the same road, and at some point in the woods, the paths may diverge enough to allow us to finish one and keep moving with the other.
That was the purpose of my message to you this afternoon.
No problem, and I understand, and that's, I mean, that's why we're here tonight, is to kind of get a feel and flavor for what the board needs, and you and I talked about this two weeks ago, you know? St. Anne's is there. Neil is correct, they're within spitting distance, so... So you can't, they're linked to some degree, and I appreciate that. But if we can work with staff, we'll figure it out.
Just other things for, to think about, which we'll deal with that meeting that the board may want to chime in on. In terms of the plan clarity, it's kind of hard to find your way on the plans. They're extraordinarily busy, and I'm going to suggest that you give some consideration to how the plans are presented in a way that is going to demonstrate the features that you want the planning board to see. For example, it may be that a planometric version of the plans and taking, will help by eliminating the topographic lines from at least one sheet, so the, and perhaps highlighting the proposed buildings, so the board can see where the buildings are in relation to the existing property lines and other features on the site. Until you reviewed it tonight, in fact, I wasn't aware of some of the other features that you pointed out. In addition, clarifying the phasing on the plans, tonight, for example, you pointed out a number of roadway improvements, disturbance areas, utilities, grading, which are actually outside of the phasing lines showed on this plan. So an improved clarity to the phasing as well is going to help the board understand the scope of the proposal and what's involved. Also, the fire access, the truck access issues you described.
I think in this case, a couple more maps would be appropriate to try and-
We're kind of working our way through that, and I got to apologize to you, if you, these drawings are larger than you normally get when they're full-sized. And I'll be candid, that was driven by the architects, because they needed to get all their buildings on one sheet so they didn't have match lines. So they're forty-eight inch wide drawings. This one, as you can see, is cut down, there's no title block. It's the only way I could fit it on the boards that I had. So it's bigger than a normal bedsheet, and you're right, from an engineering standpoint, there's a lot going on here, and I do understand that. In our next go-around, we were looking at trying to, we've actually blown them up to a different scale so that we could understand what's going on, because there's a lot of utilities that have to be dealt with, and it's not as straightforward as we would like to make it, but it can be, once we get the proper drawings.
That's what we're looking for. So if the, I wonder what the architects have to say about it? Never mind.
Oh, we don't agree at all.
Yeah, right.
For the, for the seeker review, obviously, you are going to have to address the archaeological before the board goes ahead with this. It's a type-one action. You're going to have to, you're going to have to get your, do your work with state parks and rec and historic preservation.
And basically, if you go back, this is not the first rodeo for this property. If you actually go back to the seeker work that was done for the last go-around here, which was north parking, basically, the only thing they found was the gardener's cottage, which they did. If you read carefully the final archaeological report, the rest of the site was disturbed to the point, and the rest of the site being the remaining twelve acres of this site. So archaeologically speaking, there's nothing left to find here. And I, we did do borings, just to answer the question, and this site varies, there is between six and a half to eighteen foot of fill, depending upon where you are on this site. So we will work for a no-impact letter, but I think once even OPRHP revisits it, that's why we didn't get too excited.
Agreed.
It basically, you know, was asked, answered, and overly addressed, if you will.
We'll also, I'm going to suggest also for next time around that you prepare visual EAF, because from what you're describing, I think it's probably going to lend itself to some visual improvements, but we just need to have that documented for the board to take, eventually for the board to take action. Because since a few years ago, there's the additional county park and the walkway in the Hudson to be identified in the plan review. I think that pretty much covers the general, general things, just, you know, going over the site plan checklist, getting building areas, square feet. If you're able to provide a copy of the PowerPoint, that might be useful to the board as well with the next time. And then we're happy to sit down with you and kind of walk through the procedural pathways and some of the other information to, you know, move it ahead next time.
Okay.
It's not a, we're not doing a site plan review per se, but if there's any comments from the board, I'll treat it as a discussion if anybody has any.
I have a question. Because Foy's buildings are so close to this project, are you going to combine parking with that?
Not quite sure if I understand. Foy townhouses are down here at the bottom. They're, they're up the hill and over, so we weren't, that parking is, we redid a number of years ago, the last project. The only parking here would be the two new parking spaces at the extreme north end, and then St. Anne's. So that's the only changes. We weren't planning on doing anything south of here. We're just, the only disturbance there, again, is the water line.
Did I hear somebody say that you were going to try to do something about getting into the water plant off of the Gartland roadway?
They're going to make a, try and make it a better-
We're going to make the turn more truck-friendly for them to get down there. They don't have, their property doesn't have a road into their property yet. It was an incremental step to help them out, is what that was.
Let me ask you just a question on the sitting wall. If I want to watch a softball game from the sitting wall, it's pretty good. Is that what you're suggesting, that you could watch a ballgame from that sitting wall?
Sitting wall is kind of a misnomer, but if you've been through the campus, we use that same wall. We used it to define the steel plant on Route Nine, the south end. We incorporated elements of it when we did Hancock. We incorporated elements of it when we did the more, most recent music building. We've tried to get that sitting wall throughout, and ideally, it was orientated towards, you know, so that students could come and sit and take advantage of the river, but the way the wall is built, if you look at the grading plan, there's actually a flat spot on the outside of the wall, much like at the back of Hancock. But I don't think you're going to be able to watch the softball game, to be honest with you. I think you're a little too far above the field to be practical.
I've seen some kids come over and down that walkway down to the fields, and that's rather interesting. It's pretty steep.
It is steep.
And that walkway that's existing there now, I was told that I couldn't change it, because that was one of Justin's first projects, but the architects somehow got permission to change it. So there will probably be a new walkway down that hill also, as part of our new wall configuration.
Thank you.
We're going to happily name it after Justin?
I don't have the checkbox.
I'd ask you, not ask you to comment on this for obvious reasons, but during the secret process, are you going to be doing an analysis of the impact of this on the police and fire departments? Just yes or no?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And again, the St. Anne's parking, I think we're probably going to want to, want to see a timeline for that. You were in for a forty-three thousand square foot PA building. There was a deficit of parking for the forty-three thousand. It was approved for fifty-nine thousand, which is going to increase that deficit. So I think we're going to be conscious of available parking, if it has, if that deficit has to be compensated for on the west side of the campus. We certainly don't want to see the deficit augmented. And I think a timeline for that St. Anne's parking is going to be something that we'll be taking a hard look at.
Absolutely. And as Justin indicated, we'd be happy to update the overall parking plan, you know, in brief, just a reminder on the, on the PA building, we've changed the policy to provide two-hundred-and-sixty additional spaces on a projected need of two-hundred-and-ten, so to build additional reserve capacity for the college. The students, since this, this north campus building project is really to replace the three-hundred-and-six who are already on that site, and to bring students from the community or the residents in, we've done an analysis internally. These students who would be housed there already have parking permits. So we believe that it will, there will be no significant increase in utilization, but it will be a coordinated parking area for those students. So we think that it's going to lessen the impact of those students who are driving from the other areas of the Fairview District. They will no longer need to drive to get to campus. They'll be on campus, the cars will be parked close by. And so we believe it's going to drive down some of the traffic issues that currently exist. And again, we will be happy to work with Fairview and the police district, as we always, always do. And for similar reasons, as I said before, we believe this mitigates current challenges in, in the district, consolidating the dispersed student group, student population that currently is in the Fairview area into modern supervised housing. And so we think that it's going to be a benefit to the region on those two fronts, but we will be happy to sit down, both for this board and for all interested parties, to work through those challenges.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just had a question on the, you know, you're pushing up against the parking in the north end there. There's that historic stone wall in there that's basically going to remain, and you build another retaining wall inside of that somewhere?
That is correct, sir, yes. That stone wall is not changing.
Okay.
We've repaired it over the years. We'll probably make some repairs to some of the sections that are currently in need of it, but that's a nice feature, that's one of the features when we were doing the parking lot. That's why we moved the parking lot farther away. The architects wanted to preserve that.
Remember, it looked, looked nice.
And they wanted to preserve the trees around it. So that's, that's our goal.
About how high are those retaining walls going to wind up getting, do you know?
I think the highest part is about six or eight feet, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Just thinking of the bioretention areas, are you looking at any green roof opportunities also in this area, or?
Well, these are, these are all pitched roofs, so.
Okay, so you won't be looking at that, like, like across the street?
No, they took that opportunity off the table because of the architectural requirements.
I guess that's all I have for now. It looks, looks good, the whole project.
Did you have any questions?
I had just one quick question, that, I'm a little new to this project, not aware of any master planning or whatever that's gone on for Marist, and wondered if there is any kind of parking analysis for all these different changes that are going on. Because you're saying these things, it would be nice to be able to look at that. Any document, table?
We'll provide that.
Is there a master plan?
And on that subject, if you will.
Did you have another?
The only other comment I have is-
Thanks, Neil.
The only comment I have is I want to go back to school now, because I had a small room with two cots and a desk.
Yeah, it looks like fun, huh?
Lastly, on the parking, I would hope that your parking plans also includes things like big nights for basketball games and things like that.
Yeah, yes.
I know, it's a nightmare.
I have-
It's a great thing, too, though.
Absolutely.
That's certainly a challenge.
Don, any questions? Carol, any questions?
Thank you. You ready? I move that the planning board declare its intent to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type-one action, and authorize the planning department staff's notification of the involved agencies, of the board's intent by circulating a notice of said intent, a copy of the AF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded that the planning board declare its intent to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type-one action, and authorize planning department staff's notification of all involved agencies, of the board's intent by circulating a notice of said intent, a copy of the AF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies. And call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency, and direct the applicant to respond to the following inclusive comments received from the town departments and agencies, including but not limited to those below, and that's one through eleven, plus the comments presented here tonight.
Sir.
Move the seconded that the planning board defer action on the site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency, and direct the applicant to respond to the following inclusive comments received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to those below, one through eleven, and twelve being comments from the board and others this evening. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Good presentations. You've got a pretty complex project here. So we need a lot of, lot of insightful data.
Center point, number three, a plan review. Center Point Retail Development, planning board to declare its intent for proposed construction of a forty-two hundred square foot retail sales building, associated parking area, utility connections, and landscaping and lighting improvements, three-three-five-zero, Route Nine North Zone BN Neighborhood Business, two-point-three-seven acres, unlisted action, Marist Center Point LLC owner. And I apologize to Mr. Cantor, who had to leave earlier. He's, he's, one of his legs is bothering him, and I promised to move him up the agenda, and I completely forgot, so we'll take care of that subsequently.
Good evening. My name is Justin Dates with Mazur Consulting. With me tonight is also the applicant from Marist Center Point LLC, Charles Miller, and then also Phil Greeley from Mazur Consulting, to answer your potential traffic questions that the board may have.
Okay.
So if you'd like, I could take you through the-
I don't think the microphone is working right.
Just smack it, see if it's working. You got to get a little closer.
Okay. I think I'll stand up next to the board, that's fine. So the project site is located adjacent to Route Nine on the eastern side of the Marist access, Route Nine, and then over on the eastern side here, you have the access to St. Francis Hospital. So nine will be on your, on your, on the west-hand side or your, the right, and then nine G kind of wraps around the front of the, the project site here. So the site is about two-point-three-seven acres in size, and currently has the existing Rite Aid Pharmacy on it, that's located on the western side of the site here. Parking improvements, landscaping, and whatnot. Our area, the project site, is over on the east side here. It's just under an acre. It's just a manicured lawn right now, basically an empty pad site. And what we're looking to do, in compliance with the town's BN Neighborhood Business District, is a proposed forty-two hundred square foot retail building. We've carved out that it would have a potential of five tenants, so we're each having about eight-hundred-and-forty square feet. We would look to have some flexibility in the number of tenants in that, but just right now, there's no identified users for the building, so we put that on the plan just for representative purposes. The, the back of the building, or the east side, we have a loading area. You'll see there's an existing dumpster that the Rite Aid facility has over in this corner as well, so we've tried to kind of combine service-type uses to the, to the back of our building, and also the, you know, see, the drive-through is on the eastern side of the Rite, Rite Aid building. So keep all those uses together. We would look to have a joint use of that dumpster location for both the facilities. The building would require seventeen parking spaces by code. It's four per thousand square feet per the town code, so we have proposed those on the eastern side of the building, along with walkway access around the building to the loading area, and also a pedestrian or sidewalk connection out to the sidewalk that runs around the perimeter of the, of the site. The previous application, that I put in the, in the application forms, in nineteen ninety-eight, this Rite Aid facility did receive a variance for the landscape buffer. You could see it kind of tapers down to almost nothing up in this corner of the, the site here. We do have the, the minimum ten foot around the perimeter of, of our side of the project. Services for utilities.
Well, we did that, you know, further review, but what type of tenants do you have in mind?
Right now, it's retail, commercial. There's no particular use determined at this point. We're not looking at any food service or anything, correct?
If I may clarify on that point, Mr. Chairman, we're looking at retail-slash-services. We have in mind, have five units over there, each of about eight-hundred-and-forty square feet, five units each of eight-hundred-and-forty square feet, and combination of food, retail, and any other services that might be within the allowable limits of what we're allowed to do there.
Okay, so food, like- Okay, so food, like a deli or a...
Yeah, I'd be very...
A quick convenience store?
Yes, we, we do. We have food, uh, in mind. Uh, we have different kinds of food products in mind. Um, all, um, um, uh, as I say, limited to 840 square feet.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Eric, anything you want to add, or?
Um, just that, we, there's a couple of comments in our review about the layout, um, and it, it's kind of a tricky site, and depending on what you do, we, we have a couple of thoughts there as far as maybe rotating the building, um, uh, some improved buffering, but ideally what we'd like to do is sit down with the applicant and, and discuss some options with them, both to figure out where they're going and to help them construct a proposal that, that will be able to help move along more quickly. So, our, our primary thing is first, declare lead agency, uh, because this will require it, and then secondly, before they come back, sit down with us and let's, let's talk it through and, and see what we can come up with to get more detailed plans going.
I think that makes sense at this point. And, and we don't see, I don't see a drive-through, so that's good, too. That's good. All right. We'll just do our lead agency this evening, and then we'll get into it as they, when they come back after they meet with staff and try and firm up some of the, uh, some of the things that we think they need to, to get done and so on.
Eric, I, I would assume you're, you're looking at things like, is the dumpster large enough to handle all of these kinda things and...
Well, yeah, it's, it's really the way the, the site sort of functions with Rite Aid. You know, for instance, we're gonna be looking for information about actual parking utilization at the back of the Rite Aid.
Right.
Um, frankly, I, uh, given the potential tendencies, the amount of new parking they're proposing seems to be insufficient to me.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question about the fifteen-foot-wide one-way. Looks suspiciously like, uh, they're setting it up for a drive-through, but they're not showing it. Drive-throughs are prohibited in the BN district. Um, and, and, you know, it's, we've, we've got several driveways that are all sort of converging. Um, there's, there's at least two opposite the main entrance, uh, to St. Francis. We've got the driveway, uh, going up to Artiga, and of course, the driveway coming, you know, the existing driveway coming into the, to the pharmacy, and they're, they're all just kind of really right there. The, um, uh, the intersection itself, uh, it's, it's a little funky. I mean, anybody's been, been down there?
You think?
Uh, yeah. But, um, one of the things that, that does concern me about, um, the location of the building is the, and, and potential, uh, for landscaping, uh, at the corner, is that it may actually cut down sight lines for people coming up the street from Route nine, heading up Washington Street. Right now, you, you've got an unfettered view kind of across the corner, and you're, we're potentially talking about introducing a building and, and vegetation that may actually obstruct the driver's ability to see cars exiting from the Rite Aid site, uh, or possibly from the hospital itself. So, there, there's, there's, there's a number of different things that I think we've gotta talk about, uh, and that's why we highly recommend, and frankly, I would have preferred to have this conversation before the application was submitted. It would have, I think, benefited all of, all of us, uh, but you've submitted the application, but we do need to have a staff-level meeting, uh, to kind of go through and iron out those concerns before this thing go forward.
No problem, Mr. Chairman, as far as that is concerned. And I can assure you, um, there will be no drive-through as far as this area is concerned. We have learned a bitter lesson. Uh, in terms of that, uh, there's some history on this particular site, and I want to reassure the, the board over here that, uh, there will be no, uh, drive-through permitted.
Okay, that's, that's reassured.
A quick question. At some point, we're gonna wanna know, how many parking spaces are there existing for the Rite Aid?
I think what Neil was saying, they're gonna need to review the whole site in terms of usage.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, we need, we need to get some actual empirical data. Maybe cars, unless you move ahead.
I mean, that's my issue, too, because there's, if you're proposing five stores, there's gonna be at least five workers to park as well as your, your tenants, so eighteen spaces doesn't seem to cut it.
That's right.
As well as your customers, so...
We need to, yeah, we need to have some in-depth conversations, Eric. You're right. Okay, let's move along.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize planning department staff's notification of involved agencies, of the board's intent by circulating a notice of said intent, a copy of the AAF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Seven.
Been moved and seconded, the planning board declare its intent to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize planning department staff's notification of the involved agencies, of the board's intent by circulating a s- notice of said intent, copy of the EAF and a copy of the application of, to the identified involved agencies. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to the following inclusive of comments received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to those below, one through thirteen.
Had fourteen to meet with staff?
That's number one.
Ah, absolutely. They can meet with staff twice. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, the planning board defer action on the site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to the following inclusive of comments received from the town departments and agencies, including but not limited to those below, uh, and one through twelve, and again, it's important to, if we sit down with staff and other, maybe one or two other members in the planning board to see what we could do to help improve this, uh, over what you've, you know, what you've shown there. And call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Neil.
Okay. Uh... Number four. Post-Road Center, Ski House. Or Ski House. Architectural review for rehabilitation of the exterior facade and freestanding sign, eighteen-ninety South Road Zone BH Highway Business, one acre. Type-two action, Poughkeepsie K Holdings LLC owner.
Neil, you've got a lot of work here.
Yeah, Neil. You're doing quick, weren't you?
Which one was that?
The last one.
You think?
Last one.
You think? Hi, please identify yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Rich Rennie with Rennie Engineering, and this is Charles Taft, who works with me as well.
Okay.
Um, my client could not be here this evening, uh, but earlier this year, he has acquired this center, and, uh, he would like to put a facelift on the, the Post-Road Center.
Yay!
Why do you want to start?
Right away. Um, so the center, obviously, it sounds like everybody knows where the center's located. It's on South Road, Route nine, just north of, uh, where Vassar Road comes onto Route nine.
We, we all know where it is.
Okay. Um, so we were given two tasks, two visions, as it would be. One is, uh, to clean up, get a new look on it, but also, the end where the Ski House is, the Ski House would like to do something that makes the building look a little bit more of the type of business that they have, which is Ski House skiing, outdoor business. They've now transformed in the summer for, uh, biking and kayaking and that sort of thing. So, uh, the idea for the Ski House building was to add a timber frame and create a mountain lodge type of look. Um, and then also, on the north end, to take the side that is, that was just, um, a CMU block look, I think it was just painted CMU blocks, and add a, um, a, an outline that gave it a mountain look, uh, to put a little bit of an interesting feature on that, that end of the building. Um, we've brought building samples, and we have this color schemes that we'd like to talk about or that we're proposing.
Okay.
And that's, it's pretty straightforward as to what we're proposing. None of the businesses are changing. There's the existing hobby business, the existing beverage business, and then the Ski House as well.
Keep going.
Um, would you like us to show you the materials?
Yes.
Okay. We have the, the color rendering to give you the, the general color theme. Um, the existing building is a blue and a gray kind of color right now. Um, for the mountain lodge look, we were thinking for the base wall color to be a, a greenish color, and the trim to be more of a beige, and I do apologize, the, uh, full-size prints that you have there, the color, when they came out of the printer, was a little bit off. This, this color is more representative.
That's why we asked for materials, too.
We had actually printed them as eleven-by-seventeen check prints in the office on, on a color laser, and the color came out a lot better than on the color platter.
Never fails.
Um, uh, Charles will walk around and show you the, the color board. We have actual paint samples. Let's do the color board first.
So, the, so the wood trim around the Ski House is that?
Yes, that's...
The town board to our right?
Correct. So that's what we've taken as a pine board. We've put the stain on that we've proposed, and a urethane coat on top of that.
That's the same as you're doing the post.
Can you just show me where the pine board's gonna be? Because I can't...
Yeah, it's the other way.
Oh, okay, so a different color? Okay, I got you.
Right. So what, what the, the exposed wood would actually be, what we're proposing is a half log timber, um, and then that would get placed on to the, the corners and the, to outline the frame where you walk into the building, and also the eaves of the building to create that, that lodge look.
Are there one or two tones of green?
There is one tone of green, and one, and one tone of beige. The other, uh, sample, actually, show them the, the stove finish. There's the upper left-hand corner of the board?
Yeah.
They'll bring it up closer to you and show you. Uh, the stove finish, it comes in different textures, so we wanted to show you that, the texture that we're proposing for that, where the mountains would be, which would be a, a medium grit sand finish, but then the color is then painted...
So that's an actual, something that's actually applied to the building, it's not a paint job?
Correct.
How, how thick does that stand out, then, from the building?
Uh, what we're proposing is to, um, have some of them stand out one inch and some of it stand out two inches, and we call that out, so there's a little bit of a 3D effect, but obviously not sticking out that far.
On the north side?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be...
The Ski House side.
That'll be an improvement to a wall that's empty right now.
It's great improvements for Ski House, but one of the questions I would have certainly would be, is the new owner gonna manage the other buildings and how they look and so forth? I mean, quite frankly, the, the two, the beverage place and the check-cashing thing, they look terrible. They look tacky.
Aren't they all getting up? The whole building's getting up.
But is it gonna get filled again, the windows with all their signs and trash and so on and so forth? Because it's, if you get down there now and look, it's...
Actually, Sarah called out some of the problems on the window signage in her, in her memo to the board, so that's, that's something she's aware. It's...
But it needs a management kinda thing, and I'm wondering, is the new owner gonna take a, a closer look at his property overall?
Well, I can't speak for him, but I, I would hope that he would, but I, I would say that if he's made aware of it, and maybe he's not aware of it, um, if there's a signage violation or something like that, I'm assuming, it sounds like maybe there's too much signage behind the glass or within the glass over a certain percentage.
So, there's a lot of that.
Yeah.
But let me, let me finish. Uh, there also seems to be sometimes when there's, you know, a lot of boxes from beer bottles and things like that left out front. It just needs a good cleanup.
Okay.
It needs better monitoring of the landlord, I think.
Yeah, management kind of look at it and...
I, I had a question on the, uh, you know, you're putting this, all the wood posts and stuff on the Ski House, but you're not, you're just not doing the columns the similar way on the other tenant.
Correct. The, uh, this, this idea, or the vision as it was outlined to us, was to highlight that end for the Ski House and give them the, that wood look, but not necessar- not necessarily put that on the other. Um, the, the Ski House portion of it, because it does stick out a little bit right now, does lend itself to doing that, as opposed to the other locations. It is, it would be more difficult to do that without getting into, uh, a lot of structural work.
Okay. So you're just basically gonna paint those columns there?
Yes, that, that end of the building is basically a, a cleanup, replace anything that's rotten, um, like such, there's some fascia board that needs to be replaced there, but give it a new clean paint job.
Mm-hmm. How about, uh, oh, I was gonna mention, you know, the thyme looks like it's nice, a lot nicer than, that'll clean it up.
Yes, that, that was the other part of it, was to try to bring some of that through and, uh, clean up this, the existing sign that's pretty, uh, plain right now with just some steel columns, and add that same timber look to it and dress it up, but not change actually any of the size of the signage or change that portion of it.
Correct. Any other?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to see some consistency in signs, because you have too many different colors. It would be nice if you have just a consistency of signs through the other, uh, business owners, um, because you got yellow, you got blue, you got purple.
Good point.
Just, uh, I mean, the building looks wonderful, but looking at the picture, you see...
Do you like to see the signs be more uniform?
Yeah, more uniform, maybe you say, you have a, I mean, I'm not sure if this is the actual sign, but it, it seems to be smaller, large. It's very consistent.
Okay, the, the signage on the building?
On, on other tenants.
Right, the, the, the building signs, okay.
Right, correct.
What, what we are showing there are the actual signs that are there now.
Yeah, right.
But this, you, so that's a comment then to look for...
Is there any plan to change those?
Uh, I was not told that there is, but we can certainly bring that back as a comment.
Well, we're here for architectural review.
Right.
Not sign review.
Correct.
I think that's what we went through on the AT&T.
AT&T, yeah.
You know, we said, let's have some consistency across the place.
And that looks really nice now. I mean, yeah.
You know which, uh, I'd like to refer to up the road on, there's a new AT&T.
Next to the diner, just up the road?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I, right, I did see that.
We try to get some consistency of lettering there.
Okay. So we can, we'll, we'll take a stab at that, too, and, and take a look at it.
And you also, you are changing the font of Ski House, I noticed, in before and after.
Oh, okay.
Are you, are you changing?
Well, how about we just say that we'll work with staff to work on this consistency of the way the...
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, I think the idea was to keep that Ski House sign out. I think that in our computer model, we didn't have the same exact font type.
Well, much improvement anyway, so regardless.
He's just showing it. Yeah.
Just to make sure I understand if you're gonna delay... You're talking about consistency of the signage on the building, the freestanding sign, or both?
Both.
Both.
I'm hungry. Sorry. I didn't have lunch.
We didn't say that. John said that.
Fair motion.
I move we accept the architecture as presented.
Okay.
With modifications that were suggested by the board.
With modifications suggested by the board.
To be worked out with staff.
To be worked out with the staff.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second, we accept the architecture as presented with modifications as discussed to be worked out with staff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're, you're talking about consistency of the signage on the building, the free standing sign or both?
Both.
There are a motion.
I move we accept the architecture as presented.
With modifications that were suggested by the board.
With modifications suggested by the board.
To be worked out with staff.
To be worked out with the staff.
Okay. Do we have a second? The second, we accept the architecture as presented with modifications as discussed to be worked out with staff. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Go forth, work it out and hoping to get this thing done before winter sets in. It'd be nice.
Great. Thank you for your time.
I was thinking, oh, you know, those, the slopes on the side here, made them wide enough, you could probably do a little ski. Okay, um.
We didn't propose any people skiing down them.
Plan review number five, Route 90 Professional Office Park, playing board to declare, declare its intent for, um, declare lead agency intent for a proposed professional office park total forty-one thousand two, five hundred twenty square feet. Consisting of a three-story central building and a two-story, two, two-story wings. The associated parking, New York State Route 9D East Side Zone VH Highway Business, four point four acres. Seeker negative declaration adopted February twenty-one, two thousand thirteen Soccer Spring LLC owner. This is a recent middle, we talked about this last time. Eric, go through it briefly.
Uh, sure. Uh, we're, we're just, at this time, we're just recommending the board declare lead agency on it. That's the first step, which is necessary for this application. And then to defer, that's, that's all we're proposing. And just as an FYI, we'll work with the applicant on, um. We'll need to get some feedback from the applicant with, for the next submittal on whether it's gonna be a same plan, they're gonna incorporate modifications and respond. Conditions of approval on the last set.
Okay.
We'll work with them on that. Uh, just incidentally for the board's benefit, I will note that the reviews in your packet from C through, four through C eight, I think. Uh, were misnumbered recommendations. The agenda is correct, but the numbering on the reviews themselves is subtract one. So for this one, C is labeled.
Not C six, it's really C five.
It's really C five, correct.
We figured it out.
I figured. Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency. Coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type one action. And authorize the planning department's staff's notification of the involved agencies of the board's intent by circulating a notice of said intent. A copy of the AAF and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Second.
Moved in second, the planning board declares intent for, to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type one action. And authorize planning department staff's notification of the involved agencies of the planning board, uh, board's intent by circulating a notice of said intention, a copy of the AAF and a copy of the application. To the identified involved agencies. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this site plan application pending the establishment of lead agency and direct the applicant to make a more complete submittal. That is a full set of plans, response to previous conditions of approval, circulation and review.
Second.
Removed and seconded. The planning board defer action on the site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to make a more complete submittal. Ie, for, for example, full set of plans, response to previous conditions of approval for circulation and review. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries zero. Okay, application C six is Balbo, architectural review. Balbo seven, seven eighty-eight Main Street, architectural review for facade, for facade, windows, sidewalk and fire escape renovation, seven eighty-eight Main Street. Zone ATC Arlington Town Center, point three seven acres, type two action. Antonio Balbo and Maria Balbo owner.
Hello. Uh, so since the last time I was here, I gave you everything that was asked of me, as far as I understand it. Uh, color rendering, correlation with the, uh, plan, uh, drawings of elevations that point out the different materials. Um, and the plan set that you should have. And a sample board, which is sitting right there, and I can go over any of those pieces.
Well. Okay.
Looks like I might fade away here. Comments here.
The architectural review. So what do you guys think?
Looks good to me.
I know the question has been, has been asked previously, but the, the, the fire escapes are wooden. The, the deck, the emergency landing for the fire escape is wood. The fire escapes are steel. And they're all code compliant. And the interesting thing being, if you have thick enough wood, it means the. Yes. Thanks.
That's the question I asked the last time.
Sounded familiar. I, um, I don't like the color.
You do not like the color?
Me personally, no. It looked green, of course.
It looks green. Well, speaking of printers and renderings and things, let's look at the actual stucco sample.
Okay, so why don't you point out what goes where?
Better. It's beige. Yeah, I, I noticed that myself. I think partly it's the contrast, there's a lot of things. I'm sorry, take a mic with me? Is this a wireless mic? Okay, um, here, let me put this in place of this. Okay. These, these colors, more akin to a, reminiscent of a Barnes and Nobles, it's pretty. Non-obtrusive earth tone type of beige. Uh, again, I don't know why it reads that way in the renderings, but the, these are the actual.
So which, which goes where?
Um, the sort of central area, if you will, not the trim, uh, is the lighter beige, and then it's framed with the darker beige. Yeah, it really, it really doesn't read like it. Part of it is the computer's attempt to, uh, create realistic lighting.
The base around the building is the brick?
Yes, that's this, uh, I think they call it a rond out red.
How close are you trying to match that brick to the existing building brick?
Quite close. I mean, we, we went to Kingston Block and, uh, showed them the conventional, you know, the traditional fired clay bricks. And they said this is their closest match in color.
Is that the same color of the next building?
Wait, this?
Yes.
This is not the same color, uh, what of Tony's Pizza?
No, the, the next building of Tony's Pizza.
The, the next building down from Stoney's Pizza?
Yeah. No, going, 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 yeah.
Now that's the, the carding company and the AAA, uh.
Uh, the music store.
Yeah.
Oh, around the back in the parking area?
No.
On Main Street?
Right on Main, there, there's a record store.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
It's the next one down past Tony's Pizza. I'm not sure. But what, what this does match is on the backs of the buildings. Uh, the, the trim and the colors and the pattern of the trim as well, that we, it's more apparent in the elevations is this. I'm not sure.
Looks fine to me.
Okay, I have no problem.
Make a motion to accept architectural.
Second.
Moved in second, we accept the architecture as presented with the samples as, you will leave with staff. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. When do you expect to get that done? When do they expect to start the work? When do they expect to start the work? Like tomorrow?
It's one of the, ask that guy, ask that guy. I'm, I'm afraid to say, the honest answer is I don't know, cause I haven't asked that question directly.
Let's put it this way, will it be done before the end of the year? No, 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 that's not gonna work. Come on. Well, it looks like. I understand they're coming in for, for lights on the house, for airplanes? Is that right? Okay, Dalia Site Plan, uh, it's a, uh, we're gonna have a discussion and, uh, planning board declares lead intent for proposed rezoning of five parcels from R twenty residence, single family, twenty thousand square feet. To RM residence, multifamily and senior housing overlay district called a shod, subsequent site plan approval for four. Senior housing and two mixed residential commercial use buildings, total forty-five thousand nine hundred square feet. Sophia's Way and Violet Avenue's lots and thirty-five Violet Avenue rezoned R twenty residence, single family, twenty thousand square feet. Seven point oh one acres. Unlisted action, Linda E. Dalia owner. You're killing me with the fights. Well, that's a little better, actually, it's a little more muted.
Okay, I just redid the whole thing for you.
You did real, no, really.
I did.
Good, much better. Thank you.
Hold on, it's not up yet. No, I did. I just did the whole thing. I tried to tone it down. Yeah, I did.
And it's mu- and it's much better.
Thank you.
I thought you were watching us on YouTube.
No, no, I redid it.
No, it looks good. It's fine.
Good. Okay, so I'm Kelly Leibl with KRC. Thank you. If, I know everyone's really tired and this is the last agenda item, but I just wanted to go through again, kind of this process, because I don't want to hit the repeat button, but this is one of those projects where we kind of ping pong back and forth. So I just want everyone to know where we're going, uh, with this, or where we're hoping to go. So, um, again, this project originated with the town board because it has a zoning amendment component to it. Um, so we applied to the town board for the shod designation, which is the senior housing overlay district and for site plan approval. So, um, the town board actually reviewed this plan, um, for quite a while. It went back and forth and we made some significant changes to the layout and the entrance and so forth. So we were before the town board for several meetings. Um, until we got a layout that they liked. And so then we were referred over to the planning board, to you guys, um, to start the seeker review of the project. So that's where we are now. We're, um, before you to commence the seeker review of the project and hopefully, uh, set a public hearing so we can start to, uh, initiate the public input on the project. So the remaining steps, kind of the same thing we did on some of these other applications, is, uh, this planning board will conduct the seeker review, conduct the public hearing. At which time, with the conclusion of the seeker determination, then we go back to the town board for the shod designation. And then we can come back to the planning board for site plan. Exactly. Does everyone have it? There'll be a test at the end. Um, and then it would conclude with the site plan review and site plan determination by the planning board. So I know it's confusing, but I'd just like to explain to you where we're, where we're going.
What year will that take place?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So here is the project. Um, this is the project area. It's on Violet Avenue. Um, this act, application was actually previously before this board for a subdivision approval.
Right.
Um, so many of you might remember the property. There was an additional piece that was acquired. Um, oh boy, I keep doing it at my face. It's this piece in the back. This additional piece was acquired, um, in the back. So that wasn't part of the original subdivision approval. The applicant actually, as you can see from this aerial photo, built the cul-de-sac that would have come into the subdivision, brought the water, sewer, gas. So the site is currently served by utilities. All of those were reviewed and inspected by the town. Okay, so it's seven point acres, seven point oh one acres, um, located on nine G. This is, um, the proposed plan that we have, uh, discussed with the town board. So of course, we're with the planning board now and will certainly take, uh, your input on the layout and the design of the buildings and so forth. But I'd like to just go through these quickly so you can understand, um, each of these buildings. So I'm gonna take this plan and kind of cut it up into sections, um, starting with the front of the property, uh, along Violet Avenue. Okay, um, building A is a forty-five hundred square foot footprint. These are three-story buildings. The first, uh, floor is what we will call non-retail. And there are eight units then in the balance of the building. And we can talk about that non-retail definition in a few minutes. The second building is an identical building of the first building, forty-five hundred square foot footprint, non-retail on the first floor. And the second and third floor would, um, be eight units. We're also proposing, we're trying to cluster each of the building sections, so there's kind of three different building areas. So in this building area, we were gonna do some outdoor seating, um, potentially for some of the non-retail uses. And could also be used by the residents of the facility. And then, um, whoops, I'm going the wrong way here. My kind of pet peeve, we've got, in a good way, I think these are a good thing, is we've got the sidewalk along nine G. Of course, it connects to nothing on either side, but, uh, this, as you know, is the start of like a sidewalk system. So we've got kind of a curval in your sidewalk there wholly on the property. So now I'm moving back into the site. This is the second cluster of buildings. So in here, we have building C, again, three-story buildings, fifteen units in building C.
Sorry, Kelly, you go back one.
Sure. This?
Ah, okay, I was looking, I thought it was a cloud. Okay, it's, it's courtyard.
The cloud, the cloud, what I did on the cloud are like the common areas. We're trying to accentuate some of the open space amenities that were. And I'm actually looking for some input tonight from the board, because I think, um, I, I probably didn't do as great of a job of identifying some, uh, amenities, uh, for the senior housing area. And, um, if you could give me some of your ideas so we could, uh, maybe add on to these. Okay, so now I moved back into the, into the center of the site. So building C is solely residential, it's fifteen units. Building D is kind of a cool building, because, um, this is where we wanted to house a senior center. So we were proposing a thousand square foot senior center on the right side of that building. And then the hatched area next to it is an outdoor area that could be a pergola, it could be an outdoor seating area, but that's part of the community center. So this is where, um, everyone could use the facility for meeting rooms or parties or so forth.
That senior center just services the people living there?
Solely the people that live there, yeah. Um, so it's sort of an indoor-outdoor space. And then connecting to that is, we had a bocce court that we were proposing, and that hatched area is like an outdoor seating area that we could also put some tables. So it's kind of nice for the community center to have the indoor meeting area, the outdoor kind of controlled area. And then the bocce court was, um, some tables or some other seats or benches or something. And that's that area. Okay, I'm sorry, Marvin, did you have a question? Okay, so, so now I'm moving to the back of the property, so the third cluster buildings. And, and I'll go back to the bigger site plan, so you can see where I'm talking. So back here, we have again, two buildings. Building E is twenty-one units. Building F is twenty-one units, so these are nearly identical. And then in the middle, again, we're, again, trying to cluster and kind of tie each building unit together. We've got some outdoor seating areas. Again, we had a shuffleboard here instead. Maybe this would be better served by some more outdoor seating, um, areas or wifi areas, um, for, for the residents. One of the other things that we did that you can kind of see throughout the, the blowups that I did is I tried to highlight it in red. So these are a combination of sidewalks along the front. And, uh, um, we were doing the same thing, the stone dust path and, um, kind of on retro or reflection, it may not be the best thing for a senior facility. So it, maybe that's a, um, may, maybe a paved path or something that's a little bit more structured. But we tried to do a walking system throughout the site so that people could actually, um, meander through the site for exercise in addition to the shuffleboard and the bocce court. It's just a, you know, another amenity.
Speaking for some of my friends who might be seniors, that's good.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a nice amenity. And that's, that just highlights that. I, I just want to go back one minute, because one of the things that we were proposing is where I talked about that. We had originally talked, I showed you the cul-de-sac that the applicant actually had already built, which is right here. Um, we're proposing, we discussed this at length with the town board, so I'd like your input. We're proposing that this be an emergency access only off of Sophia's Way. There was some dialogue that that should be considered a, an open entrance and everyone come through there. And we just, I, I don't recommend that. I think we should continue to keep that as emergency entrance, um, with some ballers or something there. So we would remove that pavement, um, and show that on the plan. So again, on the plans, you know, we showed the bulk regulations, um, oh, I put the prod and this is the shod. But those are the bulk, uh, regulations for this project and we conform, we're not seeking any variances and conform to the, um, the zoning requirements. And, um, this is a, just a draft rendering. We did some preliminary, um, kind of sketches. I'll let Mike kind of talk about these. But we want to try to do some enhancement, maybe some modifications to these based on some input that we got.
Just, just one, I mean, since this is senior housing, are you gonna have like a escalator option for the stairs so that, you know, us older people?
It, it's part of the exercise program.
Why don't you have a walkway from the further building up?
Here, I'll go back to that.
No, all the way around, but why not a direct one down to the senior center?
Um, well, that's what, if, this is the senior center.
Yeah.
So this is the path that kind of takes you into different locations around the building, so you could do that.
In the winter, seniors don't want to go walking all the way around. They want to get their fit. Why not have a pathway?
Oh, you're saying from here?
You got a wetland in the middle.
Yeah, this is a, this is a wetland area, right there. Have to put their waders on.
Do like a boardwalk or something.
They could get stuck. Um, yeah.
Again, consult with Marys. They know how to build bridges over things.
Tunnels.
They do, yeah.
We'll look at that. Um, the parking ratio for the shod is one space per dwelling unit, which is what we provided. And we also, um, provided digital spaces in the front here for the non-retail space, um, according to the requirements in the code. So we're, we're actually slightly overparked, but we do have parking to meet the, um, the requirements. And obviously, you would assume that, uh, senior housing potentially wouldn't have the. The parking ratio for the shod is one space per dwelling unit, which is what we provided, and we also, um, provided digital spaces in the front here for the non-retail space, um, according to the requirements in the code, so we're, we're actually slightly overparked, but we do have parking to meet the, um, the requirements, and obviously, you would assume that, uh, senior housing potentially wouldn't have the number of vehicles that you would normally see on a conventional apartment complex.
Correct.
Do you have security for this? I mean, this isn't really one of the best areas in town.
I'm sorry?
Do you have security for this, because this isn't really one of the best areas in town?
Um, not at this time that we haven't proposed security. Everyone's really tired tonight, I'm sure.
I'm good.
So we're really, you know, at this point tonight, we were hoping to start the lead agency circulation, but I'd love to get some of your comments on, you know, the building layout and, and some of the amenities.
What is your definition of non-retail?
Well, that, that's an interesting question, um, so it's everything that isn't retail.
Everything, everything in those places are free, or is that?
No, it's wholesale.
They look like retail buildings.
Wholesale.
Well, I'll be, I'll be official, and so we, it, we were concerned about the definition.
They submitted a, a form of request for a determination as to what constitutes retail for purposes of figuring out.
Doctors offices.
Correct, and, you know, my understanding is that.
For purposes of the density bonuses.
Yes, thanks.
So you're talking about office space, basically?
Yeah, you know, we're talking about office space, which obviously we all know is in, um, you know, high market demand right now, and. And so it's unfortunate that the way the code is written, I mean, I think it would be fantastic if these could be a coffee shop or something that's an amenity for seniors, um, so, so we need to certainly talk about that, I think it's, it's, um.
But what about services, you know, salon?
Yeah, certainly, I think there's things that fall in the definition.
But it's gotta be non-retail in order to.
Qualify for the bonus.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And around the corner on Creek Road, we got.
Gotcha.
Gulf Plaza, that's got, it's not going anywhere, I guess, but it's got retail or something at the bottom, that's.
Lot of space available.
And space above it, that's no one's granting.
Just, just so it were clear, Neil, you raised a good point, is that the, um, total number of units that would be proposed under the shod for this property is 70 units, with the non-retail space, so you're encouraged to do other types of uses other than retail, or other than residential in the property, so it's a mixed-use project, so there's an incentive bonus, so with the non-retail, we're permitted another 14 units, so that would bring it to 84, we're proposing 82 units, so that's, that's what Neil has referenced, we could choose to take the non-retail out, but we think that it's a nice amenity for people who would be living there. Um, so we will continue to get clear, uh, clarity on the definition of non-retail.
Back up, why do you consider that an amenity for it to be non-retail?
Well, it's related to things that senior housing would be.
Yeah, services.
It'd be nice if people could walk and not have to use their car to get some of the things that they use on a daily basis. That's what I meant.
But non-retail would say they can't go buy groceries or pizza or something.
Um, we will get clarification on that, pizza may be permitted and groceries may not, so that, that's my understanding of it, is if you're selling.
Better definition with that's all.
And we've requested.
The definitions are in the code, they've asked for clarification from Sarah, um, I was, Sarah's been out the last couple of days, but we will get that letter out to you next week, and, and we will make sure that the board gets copies of, because all of that is germane to this question of the additional 14 units that they're going to be asking for, uh, because, once, once, i- if they, if the determination is made that based on the additional square footage of non-retail space that they have provided, that they qualify for the bonus, they're locked in, they cannot later convert that non-retail space to a retail space. So, we need to make sure.
We sign a covenant that, that acknowledges that we agree to that.
A small restaurant would be a nice amenity for. For all that.
Let me, uh, ask a couple of questions regarding the senior center.
Sure.
Is a thousand square feet? I mean, your bocce court and your terrace is larger than your senior center, it seems like you got a huge complex of seniors and a very, very small senior center.
Okay.
I mean, you, you, one side I'm hearing, we're trying to make it a, you know, a, a roundabout center with some retail that would, you know, support this, that, and the other in terms of bread and butter, and then we got this senior center that's kind of squeezed.
Okay.
Well, what's an average of a thousand square, Mike, a thousand square feet per occupancy in a building like that size?
I mean, it depends on the use and how they use it, as an example, if you use it for like a dining area or like a card table, then you're, you're around 12, 15 square feet per person.
Yeah, if you had eight, eight-foot tables, you, you can have a pathway of.
Yeah, I mean, so it depends on how it's used in terms of the number of documents proper, um, typically, you'd probably look at this at, uh, like 15 square feet per person, and that's what it would be, uh, allowed under the code, and then, uh, you're not gonna get dancing probably, things like that, it's seven square feet per person, so.
You do have exercise classes, and you have, uh, card tables.
Yeah.
You have some sort of a library for the seniors.
Could be a library, yeah, yeah, any number of things, Marvin.
Take a good example, if you go down to the towns, Poughkeepsie Towns Center now, on, uh, AIDS Way.
Yep.
That is a fantastic building.
Crack our fat.
Everybody that goes there loves it.
How big is that building?
That's exactly what it's gonna be.
It's the old automobile place.
How, how, how big is it, square footage?
Oh, it's big.
More than a thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah.
It's the old Remnant Center.
I, I just don't see that everybody's gonna be in the building at the same time, you know, you got probably reservation, you know, people maybe don't want to go and play cards, bro, they don't want to go in.
But in a neighborhood like this, though, I think you, you want to kind of look at, the senior center is, could be a real draw, so a good-sized seniors center. If you go back, uh, never mind.
Sure.
Neil seems to think the other one.
No, I was thinking of your overhead shot.
Neil seems to think that's about 35, 4,000 square feet down on E.
Yeah, you, you kind of almost want to make it a gated community.
But it'd be great if you had like space in there if somebody wanted to come in and whatever, do massage or do classes or whatever.
Yeah.
That's one of the attractions.
I, I just have a question, am, are we going around or just, um?
Well, it's, it's, it's basically a discussion, you know.
Yeah, well, I just have a question, you, on, on the application, you have, um, residence multifamily, and then you have senior housing, which is it, is that senior housing or multifamily?
There's actually, there's a, it's a two-step process, so the first process is the property is rezoned to RMF, which allows the shod, the senior housing overlay district.
So it's senior housing, then?
Correct.
And the other thing too, and this is for the board, uh, since we are a lead agency, and maybe a legal will answer this, are we allowed to say we don't want non-retail, but we want a retail, because like, like Ed said, you know, we'd like to see a coffee shop or a restaurant that the gentleman from upstairs would go and get a coffee? What, what is the, I'm, I'm not sure what the zone is, Neil?
Well, you know, I, I, a- again, I think that, that there, there may be spaces that might be called out as retail, that might be, um, uh, that, that would not create an eligibility for a density bonus, but there may be an advantage to allowing for a small amount of retail in, in the context, it's something the board is going to have to consider, but I, I would caution, with the exception of the spaces that have to be, uh, for, for purposes of the bonus, that have to be qualified as non-retail, that are sort of locked into non-retail, that, you, you may want to consider to, you know, allow a mix of different business types, whether it's office, whether it's service business, whether it's personal service business, whether it's retail, restaurant, and all of those are definitions in our code. Um, I, I think that, that, that if you, um, if you say things like, you know, we don't want to see retail, that, you know, you're almost probably strangling some of the, the business opportunities.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, like a barber shop, you know, is that retail or non-retail?
No, that would be a personal service.
That's service.
And what about restaurant or catering?
You know, I think we have to be careful about rewriting the town zoning ordinance, if there's not clarity in the ordinance, then we should get clarity and get a clear definition before we start rewriting our zoning ordinance. Right, and that's, that's what Sarah is going to provide in her letter.
We asked for.
So why don't we, why don't we get that, then we'll go from there, based on what you.
Correct.
And who determined there's supposed to be non-retail, the, the town board?
It, it's, uh, part of the shod, yeah, so when the town board approves the senior housing overlay district.
But this board, who, board through the review process, when you make your recommendation, you also need to make, as part of your recommendation, you will be making a, a recommendation that yes, we believe that this meets, or not, the shod requirements for, you know, non-retail and, and other spaces, as well as the density bonus and other things.
Because if you look from the city line into High Park line, there are no retails back there, I mean, this, this project will be a good asset, and then, and that will enhance the pro, you know, the area, because there's no retails back there except mechanicals and, um.
Stonewalls.
Stonewalls and what else? I mean, I, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I mean, this, the, the, the idea behind the shod would encourage a mix, uh, of uses, and the idea too is that those business, those, the non-residential portion of the project would be in support of the residents living there and the neighborhood in general, um, and ultimately, it's for the board to approve a layout that could accommodate that, and it might include some retail uses, and that's fine. But, but just to caution, those, those spaces would not qualify for additional units under the, but density bonus, and that's something that the applicant would need to also consider.
If you do that, then the density bonus is reduced.
Is this project gonna be phased?
Yeah, that was.
Um, I, you know, I don't know the answer to that, Peter, I would think yes, but I'll get that, and I'll get that too.
Building A and building B would be phase one?
It may be, I mean, it would make sense to either start from the back and work your way in, or start from the front.
That's something we would like to know as soon as, you know, early, as early in the process as possible.
Okay.
And depending on what, I've also, like, you know, you say you just want emergency access closed off there, I want to make sure, it's at least get pedestrian access, any of these people in the houses back there want to come visit the, uh, the barber shop or whatever's there, that's a possibility.
This is a for-profit entity?
Yes.
What safeguards do we have, probably to be answered down the road, that it turns over and someone decides to make it a nursing home or a.
Well, just like any other, um, project that you have, you know, I know Ken Carney did a senior housing project, it's the same, the same scenario that you have, is anyone can come in and do a senior housing project, and if it's converted to a nonprofit, I, I don't know what enforcement remedy you have, there's nothing under here, like, uh, there isn't some of the other sections of the code.
Carney's, Carney's projects are coming in under tax credit financing, and he basically gets locked in for like, it's like a 50-year deal, I mean, it's, it's for the long term, um, but it is, this, this is, to my understanding, this is coming in as sort of a straight-up non-tax credit.
Correct.
Yes.
There's no credits, no credits being sold.
Market rate. So you're not, you don't have the guarantees or the requirements from, say, Division Housing Committee renewal that says that this is, you know, the entity operating is the entity that's got to operate it for the next several decades, and the terms under which it gets operated, this is, you know, much more of a free-market type of, of operation.
Fully taxing, yeah, fully taxing it.
Correct. Okay.
If, um, if, if you get the additional, if things work out that you get the density bonus of 14 units, have you thought about, are, is that gonna be an additional building, expand the addition, expand some of the existing building space, or do it within the existing shell?
The plan shows that, the authority takes that into consideration, yeah.
This is full build-out.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the planning board declare content to lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as enlisted action, authorize planning department staff, notification of involved agencies, of the board's intent by circulating the notice of said intent, a copy of the AF, a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Second.
It's been resonantly seconded that the planning board declares intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as enlisted action and authorize planning department staff, notification involved agency of the plan, board's intent by circulating a notice of said intent, a copy of the AF and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies, call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this site plan application pending establishment of a lead agency.
Go for it. Second.
They moved the second that we defer action on the site plan application pending establishment lead agency, call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ray, so. Okay, um. Looks like you're ready for architecture. Other business, town board referral of zoning amendment to chapter, section 210-9 definitions, recommendation, recommendation to the town board regarding a proposed zoning amendment to add office to the list of uses included in the definition of light industrial.
Okay, um, and, you know, we do apologize, we, we got the, what you received, um, basically today, uh, or actually was emailed out, I think, yesterday, Carol, uh, is, is the, the actual referral from the town board, there was a delay getting it from, uh, the clerk to you, so, but the, at heart, the definition change that we're proposing is really simple, uh, it was pointed out to me, um, a couple of months ago that our definition of light industrial did not include the term office, and yet we have offices in several of the light and heavy industrial zones, uh, many of those who's been there for a long time, I think it was just a site in the original drafting of the definition of light industrial, um, so the proposal, and you can just see it in the, if you flip to, um, uh, the last page of the, of the referral, it's on the first line, light industrial, or industrial comma light includes office, and the underline is the new language, we're just including office as a permitted use.
So Neil, if you have a mechanic, can I have an office?
No, this would be, yeah, he can have, we, for any of the otherwise allowed uses, um, within the, the industrial zones, which, let's say, a contractor, a contractor's yard, he could have an office that's part of that business. What we're talking about is somebody coming in, let's say, um, a professional who wants to locate in an industrial zone, and I, I think probably the best example is the one over here on 55, Page Industrial Park, it's offices, yeah, I don't think we'd have any, any manufacturers or assembly uses in that, in that industrial park back there, but they're all offices, and it, I think it was just an omission when we were doing your original drafting that's intended to correct it.
I move we give a positive recommendation to the town board.
Do you have a second?
I did.
Move the second that we convey a positive recommendation to the town board to, uh, regarding proposed zoning amendment to add office to the list of uses, including the definition of light industrial, call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven.
I move we terminate them.
Second, John.
Call the question, well, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, uh, I may not want to call the question, we could just stay all night. Okay, call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries sevens, thank you all.